Good evening, welcome to the Dana Point City Council meeting of Tuesday, June 5th. Madam Clerk, will you please provide the roll call?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All members of the council are present with the exception of Councilmember Tomlinson at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, is there a need for a closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two items, or I'm sorry, before we announce the closed session, I'd like to add an item to the agenda. We received a notice from the court in a matter yesterday that needs to be addressed before our next meeting, and so would like to add one item. It would be the matter of the Orange County Catholic workers at all versus the county of Orange at all. That's the Santa Ana Riverbed clearing case.
Okay, we need a motion to add that item?
Correct, and it would have to be unanimous.
Okay, I'll move to add the item.
I'll second that motion.
All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Okay, so in that case, we have two items for our closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. We will be having a conference with legal counsel as a result of existing litigation. The first case that we'll be discussing is the matter of Volkmann versus the city of Dana Point, Orange County Superior Court, case number 30201700914962. The second matter will be, as I mentioned, the matter of the Orange County Catholic workers at all versus the county of Orange at all. It is a federal case number, United States District Court, Central District of California, SACV 180155DOC. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. With that, we're in recess until 6:00 PM. Good evening, welcome to the Dana Point City Council meeting of June 5th, 2018. We'll now reconvene in our meeting. Mr. City Attorney, do we have any reportable items from closed session?
There are no reportable items this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. We'll now begin with our Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Wyatt.
Stand, put your right hand over your heart, face the flag, and repeat after me.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please remain standing for the invocation. The invocation this evening will be provided by the Orange County Sheriff's Chapel Jim Davis.
Shall we pray? Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful city of Dana Point, and what a blessing it is to live and work in this place. We pray your blessing upon our city leaders, upon our deputies, keep them safe, watch over them, also our firefighters, and all those that are serving you here in this city. Bless the businesses, the schools, the teachers, administrators, the students most of all. Watch over and protect them all, especially as summer is coming on. We thank you for all your blessings, and your grace and your mercy, in your precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please be seated. Okay. Now come to the Presentations and Proclamations portion of the agenda, and at this time, I'd like to invite Sergeant Rich Himmel, as well as his wife Lori, and their kids Riley and Elijah, to please come forward. I'd also like to ask, can I have her seat? Can you please join me? And since he's here, there's a civilian I'd like to ask joins as well, Russ Chilton, if you'd like to come on up. The newest uniform. Well, we're presenting a proclamation to Sergeant Himmel tonight for his service. Sergeant Himmel served the Orange County Sheriff's Department for 28 years. He grew up here in South County. He's a graduate of Capistrano Valley High School and Cal State Fullerton. Before coming to Dana Point, served field assignments in Mission Viejo, Rancho Santa Margarita, and San Juan Capistrano, in addition to his service in corrections, background investigations, and risk management. Rich joined the team in Dana Point in 2012, and he's distinguished himself in many ways during his service here. Most recently, served as our Community Services Unit Sergeant overseeing special event operations, the Homeless Liaison Officer, and special community-focused investigations geared toward improving our quality of life here in Dana Point. Rich has been an outstanding part of the Dana Point Police Services Team, and he will be missed. He will be missed. So on behalf of the City Council, the residents, the business community, and visitors to our city, we want to thank Rich for his service and wish you and your family the best in retirement. So thank you very much, I have a proclamation to give to you. Proclamation, Sergeant Rich Himmel, Richard Himmel, excuse me, use your full name. Whereas Sergeant Richard Himmel was born in Pennsylvania but grew up in Southern California from the age of three, Sergeant Himmel is a graduate of Capistrano Valley High School in Mission Viejo. Whereas Sergeant Himmel started Class 102 of the Orange County Sheriff's Academy on August 24th, 1990, graduating in 1991, and was sworn in by Sheriff Brad Gates. Whereas Sergeant Himmel has worked at the Theo Lacy Facility as a jail deputy till 1995. Whereas in July 2002, he's promoted to Sergeant and assigned to the central jail complex. In 2007, Sergeant Himmel went to Patrol Sergeant, working in Rancho Santa Margarita, Mission Viejo, and Dana Point. Sergeant Himmel received a medal for lifesaving in 2010 after rescuing a suicidal man from the edge of a seven-story parking structure in Mission Viejo. And whereas as a Sergeant, he's been certified as a Terrorism Liaison Officer, Hazardous Materials Technician, and received a certificate in Infrastructure Protection from Texas A&amp;M University. Kind of a mouthful. All right. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Richard Vixorick, Mayor of the city of Dana Point, on behalf of the City Council and citizens of Dana Point, formally honor and recognize Sergeant Richard Himmel for his many years of dedicated service to the citizens of the city of Dana Point, and extend the best wishes for a happy retirement dated this 5th day of June 2018. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
(Applause). Chance to speak. We'll first ask if perhaps former Lieutenant Russ Chilton has anything to say.
You don't want to give me the mic. I got to tell you, my time as the chief here, a lot of my success, I, you know, give to Rich Himmel. He was, I tell you, going through the ups and downs of running a police department, and Rich was always there for me, and always there for the community, and he just did a tremendous job. He's going to be a huge loss for the organization.
Well Sergeant Himmel is one of those officers who does not leave us empty-handed when he retires. He is a teacher and a mentor, and he is flawless at making sure every one of the events that he has handled here in Dana Point, which you can't even count how many of these events he's handled flawlessly, but he's passed that on to the next generation of Deputy Sheriff. So the CSU team has his ethics, his work ethic, his morality, and his knowledge, because he shared it. So it's a very sad day to see you go, but thank you for doing the brain dump, and we will use it frequently. Thank you.
Himmel, now is what I ask. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
It's overwhelming. Thank you, I don't need that. But thank you so much for the kind words.
the Orange County Human Relations reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members and audience as well.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the kind words, and it's just been an honor to be able to serve my community.
Appreciate this time so that I can give you the report from the Orange County Human Relations
And now I'm going to spend some time with these folks, so thank you very much.
Council. I'm here tonight to report on some of the work of our nonprofit organization, OC Human
Thank you. (Applause). Congratulations. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, let's take some photos. Right, give them a pin.
One, three. Two. Three.
Relations, in the city of Dana Point. Over the last year, and present you with copies of our annual report. We believe that all people have a right to live free from discrimination and violence, so we provide programs to create safe and respectful communities. This last year has not always been easy in our country. We have struggled at times to remember that we are all united by our American identity. We have seen deep divisions and strife among leaders and even neighbors. However, at OC Human Relations, we have continued forward with the belief that we can work together and that we are better when we do. OC Human Relations believes that our mission to build understanding among our diverse residents is more important now than ever. This relationship building can contribute to a sense of community in our cities. OC Human Relations partners with cities to manage challenging issues such as the lack of civil discourse, meaningful participation in all, of all residents in the decision-making process, and overcoming the mistrust that can make very, make every police-community encounter more dangerous for both parties. Many of our programs are provided countywide, such as our hashtag #HateFreeOC, a public awareness and education program, to bring diverse communities together and promote peaceful, inclusive community where everyone can thrive, promote peaceful, inclusive communities where everyone can thrive. In the fall of 2017, we launched a youth-focused campaign to educate young people about hate crimes and incidents. This campaign called "No Hate" logged over 1 million impressions online, but we would like to share the following information about our programming exclusively in Dana Point. We mediated 37 cases as well as seven family mediations in the courts or community where one of the parties was a resident of the city of Dana Point. In collaboration with the Dana Point Police on hate crimes and with individuals or community groups on hate incidents, we are pleased to report we documented no hate crimes and no incidents in Dana Point this last year. We worked to build a sense of community among Dana Point residents and staff through our continual hate crime education, victim outreach, and support program. In conclusion, the OC Human Relations has partnered with the city of Dana Point for over the last 25 years to bring police and diverse residents together to build safe, respectful neighborhoods, to develop positive relations among the broad spectrum of Dana Point residents, to address community conflict and strife, and to sustain a human relations infrastructure to serve cities when crisis situations occur. We are proud of the longstanding partnership we have with Dana Point and so many other cities in Orange County. Together, we are contributing to a safe and respectful county and building the important relationships that we called upon times of tension and turmoil should they come. Mr. Mayor, I have a certificate for you, and I also have an annual report for each of the members.
Very well. I'll come down. (Inaudible). We got it.
I do.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. (Applause). Just to the reading of ordinance titles, Madam Clerk, we don't have any ordinance titles to read tonight, do we?
That is correct. No ordinance titles to read. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the City Council, the public, or staff request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Madam Clerk, are there any items to be removed by members of the public?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. City Manager, any items to be removed by staff?
No, sir.
Are there any items to be removed by the council?
Yes, I have one. Item 7.
Item 7.
Claims and demands.
Claims and demands, item 7. Okay, anything else? All right, I'll move the recommended actions for the balance.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving to item 7. Item 7, claims and demands. All right, Mr. City Manager, do we have a staff report?
No, sir, but we're available for questions.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. The recommended actions that we receive and file, the claims and demands, I'll move that recommended action.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so we'll open it up to discussion. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. I just have a few questions. Okay, so I'm looking at page 23, and it's a whole page, it just says void. If you could just...
The printer got loaded incorrectly, and when the checks printed out of the information coming from the accounting system, all the numbering was off, so we got to void them all and cut the signature block off, and I even photocopied one and presented it in a frame to the accounting tech that loaded the printer on, as a reminder.
Thanks. Okay, on page, on page 25, Bank of America, if you could just explain this to me again, please. The checks are written to Bank of America, so checks for non-departmental office supplies, non-departmental operating supplies, things like that. So we have a total of about $60,000, and I noticed our fees, our banking fees went up about 10 grand, right?
The banking fees are separate from this. These are payments made. We've got a credit card we use for our utility bills. We actually get a credit for using the credit card.
Okay.
And then a variety of other supplies, and either travel or meals, like we have prior to council meetings, those kinds of things also come through here. And these are separate credit card invoices that get aggregated when we produce a check, so we're not producing, you know, seven checks, we produce one.
Okay, so when it says Bank of America, we've charged this, and this is just the charges?
Yes, and these all get billed out to all the different cost centers in our accounting.
Good, because I knew there was an explanation, I just didn't know what it was. Let's see. Oh, this is probably Mr. City Manager, on page 31, I noticed the non-departmental data technology to OpenGov, $48,000. That's the contract we signed to do OpenGov, right?
That's correct.
And when is that going to be online?
We are in process now, and I've asked that question, and I'm awaiting a response.
Okay.
Because I'm maybe even more anxious than you to see that online.
You think so?
Maybe.
And what are...
Shortly. They're actively working on, we're trying to load about 10 years of data, historical data at least, from Tyler, which is when we upgraded to Tyler.
Seven years.
Yeah. So we're actively in that process now.
Tyler's our financial package?
That's correct.
So we're uploading a bunch of financial data?
Historical.
Historical?
Yep.
Okay. And once that's uploaded, do we have the current financial data? Will that be through OpenGov so people can go online and search it for themselves?
Yeah, I can't remember if we are doing daily, or weekly, or...
We're still working on the implementation with them at this point, and it looks like it's going to be a monthly load.
Okay.
But it'll be right as we're closing the month, but we're working on a possible, possibly sooner, pulling over balances more regularly. It's just getting the whole system set up.
Okay. And will the public be able to view the ongoing financial information that's current with what we're doing up here, so that somebody can search and see what we're doing, so they have comments, and it'll be in sync with our timing?
The monthly financial reports, the quarterly financial reports, they'll all be in there.
Okay. Good. I look forward to that. Last thing I have, page 33, the San Joaquin Hills Transportation Corridor. So I had a question last month, because we also had Foothill Eastern Corridor, and I said I had gone to the TCA map, and I went back, and I only see us as Zone B for the, they call it SJH, the San Joaquin Hills Corridor. But we paid to the Foothill. So did anybody check to see...
The maps from the two agencies don't overlap in Dana Point, but they do abut each other, so some properties would be subject to one agency's fees and other properties, but not both agencies for one property, so...
So is there somewhere on TCA's public information that shows where Dana Point, where were Foothill, and where were San Joaquin? Because when you go to their TCA website, Dana Point is purple, only purple, and that's, and then it says SJH, and the Foothill ones are green.
We'll check their online maps and get back to you.
Actually, we'll call their staff and actually get those maps.
Okay. I think that was it.
Any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, that passes unanimously. That will conclude our consent calendar. Moving on to the public comments portion of the agenda, there will be a three-minute time limit per person, and an overall time limit of 30 minutes for this public comments portion of the agenda. At the mayor's discretion, the balance of public comments will be heard after the new business portion of the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the City Council and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional and courteous decorum during their comments. State law prohibits the City Council from taking action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. The city clerk will distribute any handouts you may have. Please state your name and city of residence for the record. And I see we have several public comments tonight. Our first three speakers tonight are Wayne Yost, followed by Deborah Lord, and Julie Seimer. First, Wayne Yost.
Good evening, Wayne Yost, 35-year Dana Point resident. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, city staff, members of the community, I first want to thank you very much for the city's support for our annual Memorial Day service. It was a huge success. We had record crowds, more than we've ever had in the last 18 years that we've conducted it. I especially want to say a shout-out to the City Parks and Rec Department for the outstanding job they did as far as setting it up and providing the facilities. Secondly, you have on your agenda tonight to address the community work plan for homelessness. I sit on the homelessness task force. There were countless hours put in to developing this plan under the leadership of Councilman Wyatt. We thank you very much for that. Is it a perfect plan? No. Is it going to eliminate homelessness in Dana Point? No. However, it is a very good initial step to trying to get a handle on the program and hopefully working towards more proactive solutions with additional work plans in the future. So we thank you very much for that work and your leadership on that, Mr. Wyatt. As a third note, and I am very saddened to say, that a good friend of the city of Dana Point is in critical condition in Mission Hospital, Bob Fowler, who was very instrumental in getting the city involved with veterans and active-duty military personnel in our community. He's in very, very grave condition, and we just pray that he's at peace, so we thank you for your prayers.
Thank you.
Hi.
Our next speaker is Deborah Lord.
Yes, I'm Deborah Lord. I wasn't sure if you were going to wait. I'd like to, I sent you all an email right before Memorial Day, and I'd like to thank Deborah Lewis and Joe Mueller for your rapid response. I didn't expect a response on a holiday weekend, and then for forwarding that to Mark Denny, and I'd like to thank Mark Denny for his quick response. I had sent some email for, regarding Creekside Park issues. I've lived next to Creekside Park since it's been there. I've lived in Dana Point at that address for 33 years. Since we started the construction on the bike trail along the creek, we have bikes that have think that Creekside Park is now their detour, and they're riding at very, very high speeds with complete disregard for the pedestrians. I've seen twice, on two occasions, this old man with a cane just totally frozen, not knowing what to do, as bikes zoomed by on both sides of him, and I've had many, many people complain. Walkers are, the bikers yell at the walkers, they yell at everybody because they're on the sidewalk. Mark, thank you so much for your quick response in putting up those "Walk Your Bike" signs. I saw that you added more even today, but I think that we're going to need a little bit more. What I've seen is that the "Walk Your Bike" signs have increased the tension between the bikers and the walkers, and any of you who will go on next door can see the discussion going on, and it's getting a little bit tense. I would like to recommend that we have some increased enforcement, maybe volunteers, at each end of the park. This morning, I did see one of the VIP volunteers walking his bike, well, I saw a biker walking, and then I saw the volunteer and said, "Oh, you're why he's walking." And I think that would help, especially on the weekend when there's such heavy activity. We have a lot of bike clubs, and they ride through in packs of like 20 or 30 guys, and it's, there's no place to go. Also, I would like to say, I can see the bikers' point of view. The detour signs are a little bit confusing. I sent Mark, I don't know if you could tell from the pictures that I sent you, but it looks like they're saying detour through the park, and I thought maybe they could clear up the detour signs. Another would be to offer an alternative detour. Maybe at the north end of the park, they could have them turn right, and then turn left on Villa Lenita to Rusty Anchor, down to Coral Reach, and then quickly go through the south end of the park. So that's one issue is the bikers, which I know Mark is working on. The other issue with the park is that people seem to think that the dog park extends into the adjacent neighborhood and the park itself. So we have loose dogs running all over the place, loose dogs running through the playground, and there's no enforcement. I have called animal control, as have some of my friends, on numerous occasions. They come out one time, and then they disappear. They don't come again. And so if we could get some routine enforcement from animal control...
people complain. Walkers are, the bikers yell at the walkers, they yell at everybody because they're on the sidewalk. Mark, thank you so much for your quick response and putting up those walk-your-bike signs. I saw that you added more even today, but I think that we're going to need a little bit more. What I've seen is that the walk-your-bike signs have increased the tension between the bikers and the walkers, and any of you who will go on next door can see the discussion going on, and it's getting a little bit tense. I would like to recommend that we have some increased enforcement, maybe volunteers at each end of the park. This morning I did see one of the VIP volunteers walking his bike, well, I saw a biker walking, and then I saw the volunteer and said, "Oh, you're why he's walking." And I think that would help, especially on the weekend when there's such heavy activity. We have a lot of bike clubs, and they ride through in packs of like twenty or thirty guys, and it's, there's no place to go. Also, I would like to say, I can see the bikers' point of view. The detour signs are a little bit confusing. I sent Mark, I don't know if you could tell from the pictures that I sent you, but it looks like they're saying detour through the park, and I thought maybe they could clear up the detour signs. Another would be to offer an alternative detour, maybe at the north end of the park, they could have them turn right and then turn left on Villa Lenita to Rusty Anchor, down to Coral Reach, and then quickly go through the south end of the park. So that's one issue is the bikers, which I know Mark is working on. The other issue with the park is that people seem to think that the dog park extends into the adjacent neighborhood and the park itself, so we have loose dogs running all over the place, loose dogs running through the playground, and there's no enforcement. I have called animal control, as have some of my friends, on numerous occasions. They come out one time and then they disappear, they don't come again, and so if we could get some routine enforcement from animal control would be helpful. Third issue, living close to the park.
Ma'am, can I interrupt? Are you close to concluding your past two three minutes?
I'm close. I passed my three minutes already.
I believe that was the-
Okay, okay, can I just say this one quick thing? Okay, Admiral Way has become a parking lot, and it's so, it's ridiculous. People are, they've moved my trash cans up onto the sidewalk during trash day before the trash has come, and they park zigzag everywhere, and I would like to recommend that we perhaps put a street light there, that we have people parking overnight, homeless people sleeping there, that sort of thing, so I'm wondering if we could have a street light at the end of Admiral Way. That's it.
Thank you. The next speaker is Julie Seimer.
Good evening, Mayor Viczlerk, I'm Julie Seimer, and I'm resident of Dana Point. Good evening, council members, and thank you so much for your support of the Dana Point Symphony this season. We are very proud that we are at our last concert, which will be this Saturday at seven-thirty at St. Edward the Confessor Church. It will be Bernstein, Bruck, and Copeland as composers that we are celebrating. We're also, as at the reception, will be celebrating the years of success, our seventh now with the Dana Point Symphony, with displays of tickets and programs and pictures from our other years. We could not do it without the support of the council. We thank you so much. We have lots of different ages at the symphony. We have supported two separate youth orchestras who have joined the symphony in part of their performances this year, and as you know, we bus in lots of seniors, so please join us for this upcoming event on Saturday. I think you'll truly enjoy it, and thank you so much to the city staff, to Ursula, who helped us during her time serving on the board, to thank you to the staff who posted and put up our banners this time. We really appreciate it. We hope you'll consider supporting us again in the future, but thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Our next three speakers tonight are Cal Peters, followed by Nancy Jenkins and Tim Coolman.
I would like to thank the mayor and members of the council for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Cal Peters of three-five-seven-three-one Beach Road, and I wish to address the council on behalf of my family, who has been the owner of this property since the nineteen-sixties. I would like to make three points tonight in my allotted time. First is the legality of the moratorium on short-term rentals. Second is the inconsistent manner in which permits are being issued, and third is our concern that the city doesn't exclusively consider issuing permits only when hosts are present. A little historical background, before my parents bought their lot on Beach Road, our family rented homes along Beach Road every summer to enjoy vacations at the beach. Because of this, we're strongly in favor of allowing short-term rentals and hope the council and ad hoc committee that has been appointed will consider our voice as they address this challenging issue. Just as others before me have raised similar concerns in prior council meetings, it's been a long time, over eighteen months, since the city council placed a moratorium on short-term rentals. My husband Kevin sent an email to Councilmen Tomlinson and Wyatt in March detailing our concerns. Our individual situation is this: my brother, sister, and I took over as owners of the property on Beach Road from my parents following my dad's death. In all of the years our family has owned the property, we never rented it out, although homes on either side of us were rented out often. When we weren't using the house ourselves, we planned to make the property available for rental on a limited basis to defray the substantial costs of maintaining this type of beachfront property. So in February of two thousand and eighteen, we applied for a short-term permit, and it was rejected due to the moratorium. However, to our knowledge, the city has not followed the procedures required under state law to properly enact a moratorium. I have a copy of Kevin's email that I can give to reference for your review. Additionally, the city is behaving in an inconsistent manner because it continues to reissue permits to the existing permit holders upon their expiration. This seems a bit inequitable to us. Lastly, it seems there's a willingness to consider a hosted short-term rental, but this is not the way properties have historically been rented along the beach. I think you'd find that there'd be very few beachfront owners who would continue to occupy their home during the rental. They're not accustomed to sharing this space with the homeowners. Might be an appropriate solution, of course, for duplexes or attached units, but not typical for single-family. So in closing, I just want to work, we want to work cooperatively with the city to come up with a workable solution. We participated in this survey that just went out, which was great to see. However, due to the lack of information about what's being discussed and unresponsiveness by the city, we're going a little bit frustrated with the process. It's precluding us from renting our home this summer. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you. Next speaker is Nancy Jenkins.
Thank you. Nancy Jenkins is a resident of Dana Point. The first two people that came and said how many years they lived here, and I thought, I wasn't going to say that, but I feel really young, I've only been here twenty-eight years. And so I wanted to share with you the art fest that's coming up. This is our sixth art fest, and it started because we were doing all that construction as a city on Del Prado, and all those businesses were really hurting because with that construction, people were just kind of bypassing. So we wanted some way to feature it, and now it has grown exponentially. We have a huge committee, we have three businesses on the committee, we have four artists, we have two of us from the Arts and Cultural Commission, and it has become a community celebration, and I have these flyers for you, and I think you have some, I left some outside, some will be at the city, there are in many of the restaurants and facilities around town, and for all the people watching tonight, I wanted to show this flyer. And it says, "A community celebration of fine arts, live music, food, and more in the heart of city's lantern district." And as we did it mainly for the businesses to begin with, and then we realized it was all the artists who come out there with their heart and soul. So I just wanted to share with you, we have almost a hundred artists coming. It says eighty on the brochure, but we have almost a hundred coming, and here's a picture of one of the artists that I purchased and one of the previous ones of a watercolor. And they have photographers, we have glass artists similar to the jewelry that I wore tonight, and so we want you all to come and help celebrate the artists too. Mainly, I'm here tonight to encourage everyone listening and you and your friends to come because without you, it's kind of like a hostess or a host giving a party and no one comes. So this year we changed it that it would coincide with the opening of the trolley, and so for everyone in the community who thinks they have parking problems, get on the trolley and come down to the art fest and help celebrate. The only negative thing I've ever heard about the art fest was the fact that it was so long, all the way from Old Golden Lantern up to Ruby. Well, it wouldn't be politically correct just to include a couple blocks and so some of the businesses would get extra spotlight, not all of them. So please come, we have chairs along the way, and all the restaurants would love for you to come in and sit down for a while, along with the beer gardens and wine gardens. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tim Coolman.
Good evening, my name is Tim Coolman, I live at fifty-three Palm Beach Court in the city of Dana Point. I've only been a resident here for three years. Prior to that, I lived in the city of San Marino for forty-one years. I appreciate the privilege to address the city council about a concern I have over a nuisance security light that began about a month ago. I don't expect the council to take any action tonight because I have been in communication with the city's code enforcement officers and have discussed this matter in person with Mr. Jack Holden. My purpose is simply to make the council aware of my concern, and I believe the concerns of neighbors north and south of me, about the significant invasive security light installed a month ago in the Miguel Beach Terrace development along Pacific Coast Highway in the city of Dana Point. One neighbor refers to it as the star of Bethlehem. I have provided the city clerk with some correspondence I have exchanged with the city's code enforcement department and pictures of how the light affects my residents. I would like the light to be relocated in a way that only affects Miguel Beach Terrace, but short of that, I want the light shielded as required by Dana Point Municipal Code, section nine oh five-two-twenty. I believe the city's code enforcement department has taken steps to resolve this violation, but I would like to know the timeline remaining before an administrative citation that contains a monetary fine is issued, and I hope that this is the first and last time I feel compelled to address the council about this nuisance. Miguel Beach Terrace may have made minor tweaks to the light since first being contacted by code enforcement, but that has not in any way been anywhere close to sufficient. I welcome code enforcement and the city council to visit my residence after dark to observe how annoying this situation has been. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any other public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, with that, I will close public comments, and that brings us to the council reports portion of the agenda. The city council may discuss, act upon, or seek consensus on matters described under council reports, only if they're agendized with a complete written report included, or if an item arose subsequent to the posting of the agenda and the council determines that an emergency exists. Non-agendized items may be presented as informational only. So I will go around the horn and ask for council comments. Councilmember Thompson, anything?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. I'll turn to my list of meetings, the city clerk, as soon as possible.
Thank you. Councilmember Wyatt?
I have submitted my meeting report to the city clerk. I also wanted to just, I included with it a brief summary of a meeting I intended with the Orange County Division of the League of Cities on Homelessness Symposium, along with council member Miller who was there, but there are a couple things based on tonight's topics and others that are worth mentioning. First of all, the presenters in were Helene Snyder from the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness, Jason Ryan, the League of Cities Housing Lobbyist, and Frank Kim, the County of Orange Chief Executive Officer. So their purpose of the meeting was, they presented the latest updates from the federal resources available to help local governments tackle homelessness, the latest homelessness legislation being debated in our state capital, and the latest actions being taken by the county of Orange. Also, the League of Cities and the Institute of Local Government just released a report titled, "Homelessness Task Force Report: Tools and Resources for Cities and Counties," and the publication is, and we went over it briefly, but the publication is available on the League of Cities website to be viewed or downloaded. Their website is ca cities dot org, so I thought that would be useful for some of our audience to go just look at their task force. And to wrap up, there were three key things to take away. One was, a path for cities, counties, and nonprofits to work together must be found is a critical thing. Second, strong, determined leadership is essential for this effort to succeed, I think we could agree with that. And third, even with our dedicated focused effort, it will take two years to build the components that are needed to address homelessness in the county. So those were the three sort of wrap-up takeaways I thought were worth mentioning here, the council. So, thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, thank you. I will be turning in my report, but I did want to say that I had the privilege of going on a ride-along last week with one of our deputies. Thank you so much, chief, for arranging that, I've never done that before, and didn't really know what to expect, but it was very interesting. I saw a part of the city and a view of the city I've never seen before. From three to eleven-thirty at night, it's a different city. Also loved riding in the police car because you get to go, you know, wherever you need, and people move out of the way for you, so I have to get one of those. But I did want to thank Deputy Mertz for taking me along with him and showing me the ropes here in Dana Point, and what I, the view I got was that we have a very dedicated police force. They're a bunch of great, you know, guys and women. I met Kendra, who was one of our newest ones, and she took some people up to the Santa Ana jail, that was one of the things she had to do, but just really good people, want to serve our community. I was impressed with how knowledgeable they are, not only of the city, but the people who are on our streets. You know, they knew them by name, by background, you know, they were very familiar with what's going on in our city and are paying attention, so I think we should all feel safe and knowing that we are being protected, and just wanted to thank, thank our chief and all the deputies for that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple things tonight, it's very apropos that Ms. Jenkins was here from Arts and Culture. We've been talking in depth about the music culture in Dana Point and how we feel that that could be really the, I don't want to call it our brand, because I don't think it'll ever be our brand, but kind of what we're known for in South County, as Laguna's known for, their art, you know, Dana Point with all of our music festivals, our concerts in the park, our symphony, I think it's important that we at least take it under advisement that we could be, become, or use music as one of our marketing strategies to draw more local residents, not necessarily out of state, but within the fifty-mile range into Dana Point in our summer series. But the reason I brought that up is, we have some very talented people in this city that are part of the music industry, one of whom actually is actively one of our commissioners on arts and culture, and because of ten ninety obligations that you have when you're a sworn official, some of the Brown Act issues that you have, I think it's time we start taking a look at our committees a little bit differently so we can, we can actually take advantage of that type of expertise and take a look, not just arts and culture, but all of them, where it makes sense, and create positions for them where they can participate but maybe not be as restricted by some of the different issues that we're all restricted by. And basically what I'm saying is maybe create an ex officio position for them where they're not voting, but they're participating when their questions come up and they need expertise in the industry, and I'd like to take a look at that, maybe put that on the June nineteenth agenda for discussion, if that's a direction we would like to go. The other thing I wanted to talk about tonight is Dick Sargent, and I've been talking about something in the city for a while, and I don't know if many of you realize this, next year is the thirty-fifth anniversary of the Olympic torch relay that came through the United States, and it came through Dana Point in nineteen eighty-four. And so we've been discussing an event next year that we're calling a torch run, he's been working, and for those of you who don't know who Dick Sargent is, he was actually part of the Olympic Committee with Peter Uberoff, and Dick's role was, he had to organize the torch relay across the country. And so he's very interested in this, and through our conversations, I thought, hey, that could be interesting, let's figure out what the original path is through Dana Point, maybe sometime next year, we could actually have this torch run, and I'd like to invite him in next week, or on the nineteenth as well, to discuss some of the ideas we've had, and we're going to get into some of that later tonight when we get into our strategic plan, but this comes down to being creative about different revenue streams for the city, how maybe this could help with some of that, and we'll talk about that later on. But the interesting thing about it that I'd also like to discuss is, you know, when we talked about that, I'm in the acquaintance of many of the USA Water Polo directors, and they are actively searching for a place in Southern California for an Olympic water polo training facility, it would be their national training facility, and they expressed interest in the Bus Yard. And the interesting thing about it is, they're bringing funds, they want to partner with the school district, they want to partner with the city of Dana Point, they're talking about building two pools, it could offload a lot of the issues that we have with the Dana Hills Pool and the San Clemente Pool, we would get the Olympic rings for our marketing efforts, I mean, it sounds like a fantastic opportunity for a school resource that is really underutilized right now, that it could actually do something for this community, and considering about ninety percent of the USA water polo players come from California, it's an easier place for them to train as well. Now, I understand that the school board, or school district has sent out an RFP for that piece of property, I'm not sure where they are in that process, or even what their conversations were with USA Water Polo, and if it's something that they're currently pursuing or not, but it's something to keep an eye on, and put Dana Point right back on the worldwide sports map, for instance, so those are two- So those are two of the things. One other thing I do want to talk about tonight is the TCA. First of all, Ms. Lewis, the part of Dana Point that is part of the Foothill Eastern Agency is the area on the inland side of, of the Five. That's where Foothill Eastern touches down. I can't remember if it's Area A or B, I can't remember what it's labeled as, but that's where Foothill Eastern is. So another thing I'd like to discuss is the accusations leveled, are levied against Mayor Vexorick and myself last, or at our last meeting regarding our voting record on development impact fees at the toll roads. They are absolutely false. It kind of caught me off-guard. I went back and checked, and I thought it was wrong. Mr. Vexorick and I have never voted for a developing, development impact fee, and I'm going to tell you why. The facts are that on June 12th, 1997, the TCA boards passed resolutions that put in place automatic annual adjustments to the DIF rates. And that goes for San Juanquin and Foothill Eastern separately. The DIF rates for both TCA boards are set to automatically adjust annually at the start of the fiscal year. So, and the reason I bring that up is when somebody tries to impugn my voting record without doing their due diligence, that's something I feel I do need to address. And, you know, one of the things I went back and looked at is that Ms. Lewis is actually the signing member for Rancho Santa Margarita, joining the Foothill Eastern corridor, and I would expect that she would know that, that these things had taken place. So I just wanted to respond to that, and that's it for that. And I'll return in my list of meetings to the clerk.
Okay, thank you. Well, I will turn in my list of meetings. Actually, we will recess in place. So are you advising to continue? Okay. In which case? Actually, it's, I'd like to give my council reports, and we're not, we're not actually, this is just council reports to, to speak. We're not going. Okay. Okay, I just, what I wanted to say, actually, before I, I wanted to say, I will turn in my list of meetings after, which I have not done, but I also, I think it's appropriate to say a few things. I wanted to thank Wayne Yost for making the comments. He always comes here and makes comments, is very complimentary of the city. And I was at the Memorial Day ceremony put on by the VFW. And what, what doesn't happen is, the city doesn't get an opportunity to say thank you to Wayne and the rest of the members of the VFW for the outstanding job you do for the city. We're, we're the government. It's individuals, private citizens, and organizations like the VFW that make this such a great place to live. And so I want to thank all the members of the VFW, but specifically you for your leadership of that organization. So, thank you very much, Wayne. And I also do want to add one thing on behalf of the city. Mr. Yost brought up Mr. Fowler, his, his health condition is, is not good. And we, for all of us that know Bob Fowler, it, that is a blow. It, it makes us all very, very sad. And so I, I, I just want to say on behalf of, of the city and everyone here that our, our thoughts and prayers are with Mr. Fowler and his family. So those are my comments. If there is anything you'd like to say, Mr. Wyatt?
Briefly, Councilmember Mueller suggested that we could look at changing the way commissioned to have a non-voting member. We did that to the homeless task force because of this sort of conflict of the people, a lot of who had great input and ideas, but had a conflict in voting, and it was a, I think that's a tremendous idea. So I just wanted to let him know that.
All right, thank you. With that, that will conclude the council reports. We'll move to the public hearings portion of the agenda. There are no public hearings, so we will move on to unfinished business. We have one item, item number nine, the budget workshop. Mr. City Manager, do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight is another budget workshop for you as you look at updating the adopted fiscal 19 budget, the second year of our two-year budget cycle. As indicated in your staff report, the council gave direction to update the city's strategic plan that was last adopted in December of 2005. Council met earlier this year in three meetings to develop the vision, mission, strategic initiatives, and then asked staff to work on refining the objectives and the measures for that plan. So that draft is before you tonight, and it's an opportunity for the public and the council to provide input on the draft so that we can continue to make refinements before adoption. Additionally, we've brought before you tonight the seven-year capital improvement program that we are required to submit to OCTA. In years past, staff had just brought that for adoption so that we could send it off to OCTA. Given the council's work on the budget and these budget workshops, we thought it appropriate to bring that document for discussion purposes tonight. And then at a subsequent meeting, that would be the opportunity to vote on it and send it to OCTA. The purpose for that is, the council's made a significant change in its priorities with respect to the city's budget, in that in the past number of years, it had not budgeted within the operating budget for CIP projects. And so those funds are now included within your city budget. And so while this document before you is the document that we send to OCTA to maintain our eligibility for Measure M funds, the opportunity before you tonight is to discuss amongst yourself and with staff, the future of the CIP program, and, and not just look to those, those projects that are eligible for Measure M money, but just the, the CIP in general for the city. And so to give staff your ideas, your thoughts, as Matt will go forward later this year and refine the details of each one of these projects that are identified. He can take that input that the council gives to refine that and bring it back to council for consideration in the future. Last is, we do have updated revenue and expenditure projections for you tonight. Mike has a staff report that he'll walk you through those numbers. And then with that, we're going to be available for questions and commentary and discussion on all of these matters for this workshop. There's no votes being requested tonight. This is an opportunity for dialogue for the council and the community, and then we'll take that information and, and adjust as necessary and bring it back.
Thank you. Mr. Kilbrew?
All right, there's a PowerPoint included in your documents, section three of the attachments, and we'll show it up on the screen as well. When we adopted this year's budget, council directed a bunch of different things to happen, as Mark mentioned, updating the strategic plan. There was also a directive to stabilize the budget, which was done for the two-year budget that was adopted. Mark just mentioned the funding of the capital improvement plan, and we're, I'm going to mention that several times in here, because from the finance side of things, in my opinion, this was the biggest sea change made in how the city does its budgeting. We also conducted a resident survey last year. We have updated financial policies. We discussed them at one of the workshops, and we plan on bringing back with council recommended changes at the next meeting, a, a packet of new financial policies. And then we are developing a long-term financial plan. It's in process tonight. We're showing you updates to revenues and expenditures. You'll remember on the next slide, this chart from last year's workshops, which was looking out through the year 2022, and spoke to what we were facing in those out years as far as a structural deficit and what we would have to start tackling. Moving on to the next slide really quick, because I'm going to bring back slides that look like that, that are updated. The updated draft plan is built on the master financial plan that was incorporated in last year's budget adoption. It does have actual revenue, and it should say expenditure performance from fiscal year 17 and also fiscal year to date. Those are incorporated in our numbers and our projections. It does have council-approved changes this year, and I'll go through those in a minute. Also begins the three-year phased implementation of the fee changes the city council will be considering also at its next meeting. And then the revenue and expenditure projections were pushed out beyond FY '22 that was provided last year, through FY '25. The plan does not include results or any direction yet from the strategic plan, because council's obviously still working through that. But our intent would be, as we move into the next budget cycle, so this coming fiscal year, as we're planning the following two fiscal years, the designs that are in the strategic plan that gets approved by the council would then be incorporated into those discussions. And there also is no plans, if the city council has any desire to spend any of the general fund, fund balance, unassigned fund balance, that's beyond reserves. There is no plans included in this. Next slide. The revenue projections, just kind of a high level. This fiscal year, the property tax saw incredible growth, growth that I've never seen in the past. And there was a couple of things that happened, obviously, development, as you've seen in our, on our expense side, from planning, building, and engineering, development has been on fire the last few years. And as those properties get their certificates of occupancy after they build, they end up on the tax roll. But we also had something I hadn't seen to the extent that happened this last year. What's known as SB eight, which is part of the property tax rules in California, that when there is a downturn in the value of an individual property, property owners can appeal their assessed value. And that did happen quite a bit in, from fiscal year 10 and 11 in particular, after the economy tanked and property values decreased. Well, we saw the reinstatement of those this past year, and it was kind of masked mid-year. We were expecting growth, but it was masked mid-year with the federal tax changes, when there was a lot of people paying their property tax bills early. And it wasn't, we weren't able to really predict with any level of comfort what we would actually collect this year. But once we got our April, last, or two months ago, the final, the second payment for this fiscal year, it was abundantly clear that the SB eight influx added a good, a good number of percents. We're north of 9% growth between fiscal year 17 and 18 on property tax revenue. So the, the news from that isn't only that we get the money in fiscal year 18, but it also builds on our base going forward. So that's the, the biggest number change in all of the projections that we have is from the property tax. And those get pushed out all the way through our projections. In lieu, property tax has a similar formula, if you will. It grows with assessed value also. We get that from the state. So we did see, again, north of 9% growth this year on that. Sales tax, we have about a $200,000 growth for next year. And then the fee study implementation, which results in FY '19 about 190 to 200,000 in a, in a fairly conservative three-quarter year, because it wouldn't be, the new fees wouldn't be in place until October 1st. City council, in adopting this current year's budget that we're about to finish, directed the city manager to find savings in personnel costs essentially. And the city manager, in finding those savings, had eliminated the, a deputy city manager position and reorg, reorganized the Community Services and Parks Department, and in doing that, achieved the $200,000 of structural savings that carries forward into future years as well. Sheriff's contract with Chief Sheehan's help did come in for this coming year with the 5% increase that we had budgeted. Liability insurance premiums that we got from our insurance pool came in lower, but for projections, I'm still keeping it up at the closer to 500,000 a year range. It does fluctuate from year to year based on our performance. We've had a couple of really good years insurance-wise. We did add in these updated numbers, a litigation line for the city attorney's budget. We know we've got existing litigation that's going to carry into next year. The extent to which we're going to need that, you know, your guess is as good as mine at this point. But given all the discussion this past year, we thought it was prudent to put it in there and call it out. Some folks had, had mentioned there was no litigation budget, so we've at least got it as a placeholder going forward in the budget. The approved vehicle acquisition program is also included. In that approved plan, there was additional vehicles added beyond what was in the base budget. The addition there is about 50,000 a year. The ACCOC membership is added. And then again, mentioning it again, the CIP, Capital Improvement Plan is fully funded, not only in the base budget for FY '19, but FY '20, in my projections last year, we had it at 2.5 million. I believe we, we've bumped it up to 3.2 to line up with the Public Works Department's projections now. And then it jumps up again in '21 to 3.5 million, and then there's a CPI increase at this point. Matt's also on the hook for coming back in the fall, along with Mike Rose. Matt's going to be, we're going to be talking about our road, streets, curbs, gutters, sidewalks projections, and Mike Rose is going to be talking about our facilities. But these, this gets Matt covered at this point in the projections. Next slide, please. The other things that I know the council knows about, city's new investment in homeless services between Mercy House and FAM. We've got a citizen, biannual citizen survey included now in the 19 budget. It wasn't in the adopted budget, but plan would be to do a citizen survey every two years prior to the council having budget workshops for the upcoming two-year budget. Open Gov Transparency software that Councilmember Lewis mentioned earlier is included in there. The annual cost is 36,000. This year, you saw the 48,000 in the check register. That was for purchase and implementation. The Falconer Program we're continuing at Salt Creek is 20,000. It was not in the base budget, but it is in, structurally in the budget at this point for the updated numbers. Animal Services came in a bit higher than we had seen. It had been flat for many years, for like five or six years. The cost had actually been flat. There is an increase, and there's a whole host of, of items from personnel costs to insurance costs and everything else, but that's our contribution, went up 45,000. We talked earlier in the year about our Holiday Lights program. We brought the custodial contract back. That's included in the updated numbers. We have added engineering plan check and building plan check. They're contracted services. Those activities are still at higher. They're not at the peak levels right now, but they're still at higher than normal. So this pushes them out for nine months worth of funding from the six months that's in the base budget. If they have to go beyond that, they'll have to come back to council and ask for more budget authority. And then we completed the fee study that was for the widgets, if you will, everything. People come in for permits for planning, building, and engineering-related. There, the piece that I mentioned throughout the studies in, in presenting them is, when there's an addition or an expansion of a, of a property, there's a state, state law and state valuation tables that the city uses to assess fees. And we've wanted to do this next, the final piece of the fee studies to make sure we're incorporating everything. And so we included a one-time $30,000 project to do that last leg of the fee study. I kind of stopped moving forward with that project a couple of years ago when, when we weren't bringing it forward to council. So we got the first piece done, and we had the results. And since nothing was moving forward, and we, we didn't have a, a policy wasn't moving forward either, kind of put the whole project on hold. But now that we've got this first leg done, I want to finish, finish the project. And then facility assessment study I mentioned, we'd be bringing back in the fall. We've got Mike Rose on the hook to talk about that. Next slide. Moving out, FY '20 and beyond, that we won't be asking you to make any decisions unnecessarily at the next council meeting. That'll be changes to next year's budget, FY '19. But looking out, sheriff's contract, we've got it plugged in to grow at 5%. Capital Improvement Program already talked about. We also have plugged in from the workshop a few weeks ago with our actuary, the unfunded liability payments for the pensions are put into the projections. We've added cost escalators for a lot of other cost centers for most of our other costs when we go out through FY '25. The original budget surplus for FY '19 that the council adopted The original budget surplus for FY nineteen that the council adopted budget had was 391,000. The updated one is 899,000 and that's revenues and expenditures. And revenues and net of expenditures. And then the seven-year outlook does show theoretically at this point in time, if we were to solve, whether it's through revenues or increased revenues and or decreased expenditures, 1.4 million, that we would solve through the twenty, FY twenty-five time horizon, the structural deficit, the projected structural deficit. The reality is you start pushing out beyond, beyond that and, you know, at this point, depending on what happens with the sheriff's contract in those out years, I can't say the whether or not that number would grow again. But at growing at five percent, our largest cost, if you're not growing your revenues at five percent, you're, you're cutting expenses somewhere else. So the presentation we did two months ago didn't have some of the updated numbers that we have in here. And I really took to heart the council's buy-in, if you will, of the long-term financial planning policy where there is a directive in there that staff not be too conservative in its projections or, or too optimistic. So, you know, taking a, a little finer approach, when you look in the out years on the revenues, we've added some of the development pipeline in the out years with some of the proposed hotels. Revenue that would be showing up in twenty, I pushed them out to FY, latter part of FY twenty-two, but twenty-three, twenty-four and into twenty-five. Given that, all of those proposals are in the coastal zone. And I did take conservative, if you will, numbers for the occupancy rates of those proposed hotels, as well as the actual average daily rates that people would charge or that the hotels would charge. And there's escalators in there for, very muted escalators for the overall transient occupancy tax for the hotels we already have. I've got those in the one and a half to two percent growth range. Actually for FY nineteen, I've got it flat. I'm a little concerned that we're kind of at, we're at a historic high right now. You know, economists are arguing whether or not the next recession is going to start in, after 2019 or after 2020. But everybody seems to be on the same page that there's going to be one out there and how much that impacts us. You know, the great recession and, you know, comments made about some of the groups that had stayed in our hotels back in 2007 and eight. You know, it really drove our TOT numbers down literally 40%. Don't ever expect to see that again, I don't know that we want to plan for a 40% decline to, you know, for a great recession, but it's certainly out there. And I've muted the projections for TOT increases. Given all that, so this was the presentation we made two months ago with the updated numbers, the next slide. See the numbers have come down, we got our property tax payment in the latter part of February. We've got updated TOT numbers, or hotel tax numbers again, and sales tax numbers. So updating all the numbers with, particularly the sale, the property tax, we're looking at 200,000 in 2020. And then if you kind of do the math there, if you solve 1.444 million in, over those three years or in the first year, you would solve theoretically what, what is a projected structural deficit at this point through FY twenty-five. So last slide. Looking forward, again, at the, actually the workshops you've covered over the last couple of months, I just wanted to run through those. You've covered financial policies, you got a pretty in-depth pension briefing, obviously went through the sheriff's contract, had an opportunity to talk about that. You've talked, you've went through the fee schedule. The updated strategic plan is before you tonight. And then what we're looking for is some discussion and any input you might want to have before we bring all these documents back for the June nineteenth meeting. And with that.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm clerk, do we have any public comments on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. With that, as the city manager mentioned, this is a discussion item only, there's no need for a motion. So what I'm going to do, we have, for those of you who have the agenda in front of you, there are three subsections here to try to keep us as organized as possible. I think we'll just take one at a time and go around the horn for comments and discussion. So having said that, the first subsection under item nine is to discuss the draft of the updated strategic plan. So let me start going around the horn, Councilman Tomlinson, do you have anything?
No, I think it reflects what we all discussed over those several meetings that we had months ago.
Thank you, Councilman Wyatt.
So I do have some comments on it. And first of all, I want to, you know, thank the, the staff, the amount of work that took to take the rough guidelines we gave them in terms of categories and priorities and try to break them down into objectives and, and activities. Is probably something that they didn't have on their, on their list of things that they were looking forward to do for the year when they're operating the city and it's, it's a fair amount of work. And looking at it, you can tell that some were more comfortable with it than others as a, as an exercise and so, you know, the variations. But my general takeaway from looking at the plan comes from, you know, a background of, of, of having had to, had to develop probably hundreds of prioritized strategic plans in my career, usually to try to get a venture capital fund business for us or somebody that was contracted with me to do that. And so my general view was if I, if, if it wouldn't hold muster on Shark Tank, then I probably hadn't got the job right yet. I don't think we are, we are quite there in terms of getting through. We didn't prioritize the guidance we gave to the, well enough. And now we'll, we have some work to do to prioritize it and, and tighten it up quite a bit. My other experience from working with it is it takes a, it takes a, an absolute belief that it needs to be done and done well in order to get it done and done well. So my, my real question here comes back to the council. Because I think we, we took it to a stage of having set the, the overall strategic priorities at, you know, at a, at a, at a top level. We didn't give much guidance on how to prioritize and break down and, and work into much more detail from there. And the, you know, the plan now added to by staff makes it clear that now the real work of figuring out how that gets grouped and prioritized is, needs to begin in order for us to apply it to a budget. So my real question really comes here in our discussion is, you know, are we, are we up for the challenge as a council to really sit down and work through this and, and understand whether these are the right set of objectives? Can we identify the owner of them? Can we really measure whether we're succeeding against them? Can we fit them into the priority as directed by, you know, our community survey and others and sort of organize where the cutoff in each of these were? Because we could spend the entire city budget in any category, public safety is, you know, probably I could spend most of my budget that wasn't, you know, committed structurally elsewhere. I could probably do the same in some of the development areas and so forth. So I think the, the onus is now back on the council to take it to the next level of, of, of cleaning up, paring down, prioritizing, et cetera. And I just, you know, want to know whether we, as a council, think that we're up to doing that, it's worth our time? I mean, as, as a debate among my fellow council members is the real key question I have.
Thank you, Councilman Lewis.
Thank you. I guess I share, I share the point of view of Mr. Wyatt, so I'll just not repeat a lot of it, but just add my comments that we started a process. We had, as it shows in here, three meetings with the city council, a strategic planner and staff. And I felt like, okay, we were starting, but we didn't really get into the meat of it. And that the staff took on a lot of the, the hard work, which is great. But since the council is the policymaking, I think it's really important for us to sit down and go through these. So, you know, I looked at like objective 1.8. City achieves PPS criteria and measurement targets for comfort in images, access and linkages, uses and activities, sociability. Well, I know that's not me, I, I have no idea what even that means. I don't know what a PPS is and I don't know what comfort in images is. So my point is that it's a, it's a, I'm sure it's somebody's really good document for this, but it needs to be integrated with the council. And, you know, is this, is this what we're trying to achieve as well? Does this work for our city as opposed to is this a good plan in general? I had the same issues with objective 1.4, achieve livability factor targets to achieve high quality of life. Talked about Dana Point achieves a livability index score of 70 or higher per area vibes for amenities, cost of living, crime, education, employment, housing and weather. Well, weather, my gosh, we have a hundred there. But again, these are terms I'm sure that are known in the industry, everybody who writes these things, they know what they're talking about. But I don't feel it as a reflection of us and where we are and that we have bought into it. Because again, I don't even know what a livability index score is, much less a 70 or higher. And it may very well be something that is a great goal. Just, I think that as Mr. Wyatt said, I would really like to see the council involved and buying into these goals as our goals and prioritizing those goals so that we actually understand it and put it in English. So that when people, you know, our residents look at it, they go, oh, yes, I, I could see that, that those goals make a lot of sense. And that is in line with, with what I want to see in Dana Point as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wow, you guys kind of hit on everything I was going to talk about, I have no idea what a PPS is either. I looked at this whole section going, I have no idea what any of that means. And I, and I would like to see it actually explained a little bit, I don't want to say in clear English, but in clear English, so we can understand it, in layman's terms. You know, you hit on the, the index score of 70 or higher with Area Vibes, which I think is a magazine, is that correct? Was Kelly here? It's a website. It's a website, Area Vibes, that ranks cities. At 70 or higher, I don't know, when I went to school, 70 was just barely passing. So, so I don't know if that's a good number or not. I, I would, you know, hope we could strive for something higher than that. I looked at the, the public safety and we're doing per capita measurements. And we're, we're a, we're a visitor-serving community. I mean, our population surges over the summer, we, we host 1.2 million visitors a year. Is that really the right way to, to, to rank our, our public safety? Because we're actually protecting more people than just the 35,000 that are here. And I, you know, Lieutenant Sheehan may want to respond to that, but, and then I, I looked at these priority one calls and we're going to respond within five minutes. You know, I don't know if that's a good number or not because I'm not in public safety, it seems like an awful long time to me. If I'm in a life-threatening position, I don't know if that's a good number or not. And so things like that, I, I need a little bit more information on. But, you know, I, I mean, I think we all kind of went through this and I'm sure we're all going to have some of the same issues. I looked down at objective 1.6 and I look at number of work orders, number of work orders, you know, number of street repair work orders. That to me seems like it should be in our preventative maintenance program and we should be on top of that. And if that number's very big, you know, I, I think we're, we're falling down somewhere else. So, you know, we just put in a $2 million facility budget, or facilities maintenance budget. And I would think that some of the stuff would fall underneath that and, you know, if we're spending our $2 million there, we shouldn't be seeing a lot of this. So, you know, one of the ones I kind of laughed about was, oh, we're not to two yet, I'm sorry.
Skip ahead.
No, I'm not going to skip ahead. So, but yeah, I mean, I think, you know, this is really interesting and staff did a great job on it. It's just, some of it's a little bit hard to understand and so it's hard for us to give direction on that. So, I mean, if we could clean it up a little bit and, and put it in city council language that we can understand instead of hashtag F's and stuff like that, so, thank you.
Thank you, I just want to say, you know, we did have three very long meetings on this where we discussed what, what the strategic plan was going to look like. And I, I think we've essentially succeeded in putting together a plan. One of the comments I, I want to make is it seems like a lot of the discussion is on the specific metrics of measuring of how we are achieving our objectives, which we set. And, and I know that the city or the staff is trying to figure out how do we make sure that we hit these goals? I think that's the right thing to do. We've heard some criticism of it though, here at the dais. One thing I, before we move on, even though I'm, I'm last in line here, I, I'd like to suggest if anyone else would like to say anything, that I, I don't like the concept of just saying, you know, nice try, staff, as this is one of your goals, try again. I mean, if we, if we're unhappy with any of the specific things that are put forward, you know, if we're going to say, for example, that you're measuring something per capita is not correct, then I, I think that in order to give the direction to staff, we should have an alternative and say, instead of using this, use something else. Because otherwise what's going to happen, I think, is we're going to kick this to staff and they're going to say, well, we got your direction, you don't like these metrics. They're going to try and come up with some other metrics and then who knows if we're going to like those or not. I guess what I'm really trying to say is, and I, I'm certainly not one for trying to prolong a meeting, but this is one of our, this is one of our opportunities as a group to give that direction to staff. So if, if there is anything else that we have specifically that we think should be changed, I, I think now's the time to offer those up. So I, I guess with that, like I said, I, I'll conclude my comments and certainly it's not required by anyone else to offer anything else up. But I'd like to give anyone else who has some criticisms, the opportunity to make any other comments they'd like. Councilman Tomlinson, I'll start with you, go around the horn.
Nothing right now.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Wyatt.
So I want to sort of, well, I have two things. First of all, I want to, I want to defend staff a little bit here in, in a positive way. I think that we asked them to do an exercise, which was pretty new to them, which is to try to, to break down their work into measurable objectives. So they, you know, in, in a relatively typical fashion, they looked at the metrics, not the goal in some fashion. And so we're seeing measurements put forward of how, what I, what I'm thinking of doing, I would measure. That's one of the reasons why as we start to work through it, I think it's for us working with them or working together to go back and saying, okay, so you have something you want to achieve, right? You want to make the city, you know, I mean, livable has a real definition and the various terms start to add up to how you might score, whether you're succeeding or not and so forth. So at a first cut of trying this, it's not too surprising that you sort of figure out, and the same with the, how the sheriff might measure how they're doing against other sheriffs and so forth. So ultimately, our goal, our goals as we So, ultimately, our goal, you know, our goals, as we look through it, as we prioritize this, are, you know, is to achieve certain things, and, and how safe the city is. How do we know that we're making the city safe, and compared to what? And what's the metrics to that? So, you know, getting the goal out ahead of the measurement is a bit a part of the, the work we have to do when working with them sometimes, or, or taking some, some guidance from them. You know, there are other activities that, you know, when I look, I want to weigh in, I want to, you know, I'm, I'm a real proponent of, you know, of proactive police force, of, of having visible patrols on the streets, if we wanted to do that. You know, what's our target for that? How do we measure how, how visibility is working in? So, you know, and adding that in as a metric would be useful. I mean, as my, my general feedback is, as you walk through these, every one of these items that staff has added is worth due thought in terms of intent. Do we understand it? Can we measure it? What's the priority of it? And I think, I guess the question I really have is, you know, it's a fair amount of detailed work. You've got to get into the weeds a little bit on how you prioritize things. And we started off, and we set priority at 30,000 feet. We need to set priority at a bit closer to, you know, to the ground than that, to really give good direction for staff on what we want. If, if the, if the broader feeling is that we had three meetings, and that's enough, then that's, you know, that's where we're going to leave it, and we'll figure it out from there. If there's a general feeling that we need another meeting or two now to take this feedback, essentially, and organize it and drill back, and then ask very specific things, because, you know, I mean, I know I've, you know, when I, whenever I've, you know, whenever I've done one of these for, especially for a new startup company that has a new idea, you know, all the, all the staff members who have to do the homework go, you know, "I'm really busy, and I've never done this, and I think it's a waste of time." But when you're going out and asking, in that case, you know, a venture capital person for $20 million or something, if you haven't done your homework, you're not going to get the money. I think we owe it to our residents to take that same view. We're, we, we get their money, and we need to do our homework, and really think carefully about the priorities and how it gets used, so. But it's not a trivial task. We won't do it well unless we believe it's worth doing, and that's, you know, really the part of that discussion. So, if we think the staff should be able to take it from here, then we will get staff's best cut at it first time, and over a number of years, I suspect we'll get it refined, and it will get better. But I, I'd like to ask if we are willing to, you know, put a little more elbow grease into it.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, thank you. Okay. I didn't get the impression that we were criticizing staff, any of us. I, I know I certainly wasn't, and I don't, I didn't get that impression. Quite the contrary. My point was that the council needs to do more work on this, that we had three meetings. We never actually did come to any agreement. I don't even think we agreed on what the, let's see, where are we here? Yeah, I mean, we never even agreed on our vision, you know, so we didn't even get that far. We had a whole bunch of notes, and, you know, staff took those notes away and did the best they could with them, and, you know, I applaud them for that. So, my point is that it really is, is council's job, as a policymaking board, to be driving a lot of this information, not the staff. We, we need to work together, but we need to sit down, and we need to come to, we need to go to these kinds of meetings, and we need to decide what are our priorities for the city, and sit down with staff and make sure it's written in such a way that we actually have come to an agreement on where we're going. And it's in, it's in a, a, a language that the five of us can actually understand and go out and talk to people about, because we're not sitting there saying, well, you know, I, PPS here, and livability, and the seventy thing, and... So, my feeling is, the critique was more of, the council needs, needs to sit down and actually get more serious about taking this first stab at it, and then getting deeper into the weeds to determine what really are our strategic initiatives, what are our goals, that we, as a council, agree we want to see the city going, in what direction, and how do we, as a council, measure success? Because ultimately, the people who vote for us are going to measure our success that way, and we need to be able to go out and say to people, well, you know, here was our goal, and we met it, because here was our metrics. And we need to be able to have sat down and come to that agreement a, as a policymaking board. So, I think the staff did a great job, given what they had to work with. But I'm saying, I guess I agree with Mr. Wyatt, that we need, as a council, to do more work, to sit down and make this document a council document, more than a staff document, because we ultimately have to tell the staff, here's our policy, here's where we want the city to go, help us implement it, not, oh, here's our notes, see what you can do with that, you know, yeah, that looks good, and then move on. So, if you felt you were criticized, you were not. My apologies.
Mayor Proton Miller?
Don't have a heart attack out there, but I agree with Ms. Lewis. So, I don't think any of us were, I know, don't have a heart attack, but we just agreed on it.
Is that on the record?
Yeah. So, yeah, it was not my intent to criticize. It wa, it was more my lack of understanding the document, and understanding some of the terms in here, and wanting to know if per capita rankings are the right way to rank that or not. Are there other ways to do it? I need input from, from our public safety officials on that. You know, this is a great attempt, or a great first run at it, you know, it's something we need to take a look at. I think we did do a pretty good job of establishing our, our, our strategic initiatives. We, we pretty much gave you one, two, three, four, and five. Okay? That came out of the, that came out of the meeting. And what we left to you was, okay, now, how, how do you see yourself going about accomplishing this? And as professional staff members, I, I kind of feel like that's your role. We're giving you the, the, the high-level guidance on this. And looking at this, this is, a lot of this is very interesting, things I would have never thought about, because I'm not a public, I'm not a staff member for a city, and I don't think about things like this. So, I think it's there. I think we can go through this. If there's something missing, you know, by all means, we could add it in there if we see it. But right now, I think ultimately, this is going to be a live and breathing document as we go forward. Strategic plans are going to change, you know, depending on, you know, councils change the plan, the, the strategic plans and initiatives will change, based on what that council thinks the city should be doing. So, I, I think this is pretty, is pretty good as it's written. I just need a little bit more clarification on a few of the things, so I can understand them a little bit better. And I'm trying to give input on, on some stuff that I think, hey, you know, maybe we could define this a little bit better, or, you know, but I didn't really see anything in there, miss, that we're missing, but that's just me. And my, the other council members might find something in here that, that they think should be included. Right now, I think this is a pretty good shot at it, but I'm willing to listen to the other council members and see what they think is missing, so.
Okay, I'm going to try this one more time. I, I've, I've heard a lot of comments from my fellow council members, that the council needs to do more work on this, or we need to get together and sit down and work on this. I can tell you, where I'm sitting, we're all together, and we're all sitting down right now, and this is in front of us. If we want to do this, now is a good time. So, I, what I want to do is, I'll try it one more time. We'll go around again, and see if, for those who are suggesting that we need to get together and work on anything in this document, we can do that now. So, I, I hope I was, that's my intent of what I'm saying is, is clear enough. So, I'm going to give it one more try. Councilmember Tomlinson?
A lot of these things are pretty clear to me, so...
Thank you. Councilmember Wyatt?
How many hours do you have? I guess that's the question, because ultimately, there's a lot of work to be done. There's many hours of work to take it from where it is to where it needs to go. So, for example, when we look at, you know, public safety, I think we talked about, we, you know, I think it's important for us to list, you know, that, one of the things we would like, one of the things I would like to see on there is a visible police presence in all areas of the city, day and night. And we look at, at, you know, and, and that can be provided by, you know, I mean, things that we should prioritize in there, police kiosks, police patrols, ambassadors probably to work for terrorists of the city, neighborhood watches, programs where they'd fit in. And basically, the metrics are, you know, coverage metrics, right? I mean, all people, you know, everybody's GPS tracked anymore when they're on duty and want to be, right? So, you could find out, for example, what our coverage plans were, how well we're covering, how often do we cover which sections of the city, where are crimes more likely to originate, and therefore, adjust coverage, so with the random activities that take place there, where our patrols are more random, as, as an example, right? I, you know, we, I would like to see, you know, traffic enforcement as one of the listed items on there. How do we measure, you know, and, and it came up before, how do we know that our traffic enforcement is effective? The metrics that just start to say, what, what is it that we want to measure to bring traffic accidents down? Is it, it's not number of tickets written, it's end result of that traffic, right? So, the metrics. And how do we work with, you know, our neighboring cities to do that? So, one item on there, sense of place, right? Who are we as a city, right? You know, I mean, ultimately, goal there, warm, welcoming, and distinct, creative special, creating special memories for residents and visitors. That's sort of how we want to be perceived. So, what do we want to do to put in it? Where's our landscaping? Our, you know, basically, our parks, our clean, usable restrooms in the parks? How do we know, you know, what's our, what's our schedule to inspect and clean, so that when you go into the restrooms, you're not finding, you know, you won't take your kids in there anymore, right, in the parks? Lights, do we measure luminance sidewalks in the areas of the city where we have issues, right? And if not, what's our plan to, you know, increase lighting in areas where we feel, you know, bad behavior originates, and, and measure the lumens in their various areas where pedestrians might end at night, where we don't want them to, that visit to end in a bad way? How do we create the small-town field building on our culture and heritage, right? Where, you know, where do we create that sense of place where people always go to meet with their neighbors when they have visitors out of town? That's where they go, right? That's the whole thing that you were talking about, about the livability index, right? It's, it has to do with, there's always this place where everybody feels welcome, and they all mix with visitors, residents, you know. I mean, my, my bigger joy is when I'm out running at lunchtime to run into a bunch of people and feel like I'm on vacation, because they all are. I said, where's the, there's places, right? So, then, you know, moving on to, you know, community services, right? I mean, this whole idea about making sure that they're inclusive, that we look across the spectrum of who are, our profile of our residents, and how we pull them all into, you know, from our seniors down to, you know, our schools, what are clubs, what do we sponsor? How do we measure all of the things? When we will look across the various events, how are we measuring, which, which target of our community are we after with those events? And how do we know that we're, you know, you know, we, you know, I, I might, I might like to, you know, hear the, you know, the sixties music more than, you know, today, and the Blues Festival. I mean, again, what are the events? How do we continue to look at them and measure broad inclusion in those events, right? And outcomes, you know, communicate and engage, a huge part of our strategy, right? What do we, you know, how's our open data technology helping us reduce PPAs and getting more information? You know, how do we use our, our surveys and forums more effectively, and continue to monitor how well they work? So, that sort of gets me on a, you know, through, at a really high level, objective number one, you know, when you get to, you know, financial strategies, right? I mean, basically, I want to know how we want to invest in our future, as well as making us long-term stable. So, you know, the operations and planning's budget, we're doing a lot of work on, right? Getting policies in place, making sure that we don't, you know, that we consider the fact that, you know, things that we're correcting in these budgets, where we're, we're saying that, you know, you can't, you can't have a balanced budget that includes deferred maintenance, right? I mean, ultimately, so, what's our policy? Because if you did, if you wear out the roof and you don't plan to replace it, you still wore out the roof, right? So, it was a structural cost, whether it showed up on your, whether it showed up on your balance sheet. So, getting down into our core, and when I look at the, the budget, there'll come up on CIP next, you know, there's a million-plus dollars right off the top that's just maintenance of stuff, maintenance of storm drains, maintenance of sidewalks, whatever that, that's all structural costs, right? How do we make sure that, as we measure it, all that's dealt with in our budget? Right now, we're trying to catch up on deferred maintenance to the tune of, you know, somewhere between five and seven million dollars before we catch up. We put, what, four, two in, and another two and a half. I mean, we're going to get there, but there's a fair amount still of catch-up before we're on a stable platform of deferred maintenance. Whatever that number is, we got to catch up. We don't want to get in that place again. You know, we had the same issue on vehicles, right? We didn't accrue, we used up vehicles, but we didn't, we didn't reserve to replace them. So, we switched to a leasing program, primarily not to take that cash hit. We don't want to get there. So, how do we measure? Are we reserving the things that we're using up, and how do we go back and adjust it? All of those things can get cranked in. It gives the staff guidance and priority to run from. So, cost recovery, another one we've dealt with on, you know, budgets. How do we plan to do cost recovery on things where we believe it's necessary, and set the policy for that, and update it with a budget plan? What's our goal? How do we know that we're achieving what we, you know, the margins that we expect to achieve, or the thresholds, or? I mean, we've decided in, you know, to subsidize a certain set of fees. We've decided to subsidize it because we believe there's a benefit broadly to do that. We should work with them to look at the measures. How do we know that we're achieving that? Where aren't we achieving it? Where are, for example, things not being permitted that should, or things being delayed because we have a fee that's too high, or so forth? Anyway, we haven't done, I mean, to go through item by item on there, and prioritize it, and say, that's a core, that's a core line item that's got to be on the budget, we, it's a, you know, and so forth. That's a value-add line item, right? That's important, you know, but whatever. And then, how do we measure it? It must be on there to achieve a result. How do we know that we're achieving it? You know, asking, without more guidance from us, asking our staff to do that, I think, is problematic at best. So, anyway. But I have a, I have a many-page list, I guess, and I'm willing to look through and share, and get together, and meet, and discuss items on it, if there's, if there's an interest. But, you know, it's just my list, right? I mean, you know, and I'd like to, that's the reason I said, I don't, I don't think that setting here, I mean, if we want to go through item by item, and sort of compare them, and turn them into metrics, we will be here well past 2:00 a.m. I can assure you of that, so, anyway. But I'm willing.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Yes, I agree. We will be here past 2:00 a.m., and I'm not willing. So, I mean, we, we start this process at 7:30 at night, after a whole lot of stuff. This is our business meeting. This really isn't, for me, I don't see this as the place where we need to really start digging into the weeds and, and coming to some agreement. I'd like to see focused workshops. We have five, all of five strategic goals. I'd like to see us have workshops on each one, and start with one, and go through, you know, the goals, the objectives, the metrics, and then move on to the next one. Not, not that, not that we get it all done at one time, just, we need to focus on our five goals and strategic initiatives, and I think that's just going to take... And I think that's just going to take some time. It's going to take setting aside dedicated workshops for that. And I got to tell you, eight o'clock at night is not the time I think that we're all, any of us are at our best to do that and have the time to do that. So, I, I'm with Mr. Wyatt on, on the approach. We really have to get down into the weeds. And that, that takes just setting aside the time and having the, the will to, to just slug through it.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Miller?
I understand where, you know, councilmembers Wyatt and Lewis are coming from on this. You know, that, this, like I said, is a living, breathing document. We could, we could spend hours and hours and hours on this and not come to a consensus. Or we will, or it wouldn't take us very long at all. I don't know. But I think we need to be willing to continue to work on it, not just to set it down and say, okay, we're done. And when we start looking at things, we, at, at different issues going on in the city, like I said, our, our goals and initiatives will probably be morphing over the next few years anyway. We, I don't know if sitting down for, you know, one or two, three marathon sessions trying to bang this out is a bad idea. I don't know if it's a great idea. I don't know how productive it's going to be. You know, we had our three sessions, and they were, I, I don't want to say marginally successful, because we did get some good information out of it. But, you know, when you, I guess I, I, I'm not absolutely opposed to it. You know, we gave it a shot. And, you know, I, my, my issue is, as, I'm, I'm not a community planner. I'm not a land use expert. That's why we have staff around us to help us with that. And, so I look at this and, you know, a lot of, a lot of things are in here regarding that. And I think a lot of what Mr. Wyatt brought up was probably considered as they were going through this on how they're going to measure it. It's just not listed the way, like I said, the way that, that maybe we would like to see it listed. So, you know, I, and I can't say anything Mr. Wyatt said was wrong. I mean, it was all very thoughtful and, and invalid. And I think a lot of it's in here and what the staff gave us. So, maybe what we're looking at is, you know, maybe we, I don't, I don't want to say take another shot at it because I, I think, you know, this is an important document to us as we're trying to approve our budget, and we're approving our budget on the 19th. And I, I don't see all, really, any of us having five or six free days to go through each one of these one at a time. I, I don't know, I'm not sure, you know, when we're going to try to get this in right now before, before our budget comes up. But I'm not opposed to submitting things to staff and letting them know, hey, these are things we're confused about. This is what I'd like to see. This is how I'd, you know, like you to discuss this, put it, put it into the plan as a new metric. And we can all submit those things and let staff have at it, and then, and then we can all look at it again. But I'm, I'm concerned about the timing of this. I, I just don't think we're gonna, we've got enough time to go through this whole thing again 14 days before we approve the budget. So, but I'm not opposed to, to trying something on it and trying to get that information in, so.
Okay. Thank you. I'll just, I'll, I'll state my view on it. This is a strategic plan. It's not an operational plan. It's not a tactical plan. We are not really debating right now the strategy. We're talking about these metrics falls really into the tactics level, I think. We also, I think, committed to review this annually, so I'm comfortable with it as is. That's my feedback to staff. So with that, I'm going to move on to item two.
Can I, can I respond to Mr. Miller briefly, please?
Yes, Councilwoman Wyatt.
Thank you. So, I, I recognize that we're going to get a budget that we haven't yet seen. We're going to talk about it in a bit, a little bit. We are, my big concern about this is that it's not at a level to allow us to make good budget decisions yet. That is, so our, and our budget's not way out of whack, so, you know, it's, it, from where we set it to be, we, I think we'll look at that. Could it be better? Yeah. Do we want to prioritize things? Yeah. But we can change the budget every meeting if we want to. So, so, any guidance that we can give, you know, in the next couple of weeks is good, but it's not the end of where we, you know, end up. We won't get this process right for this FY 2019 budget. I think we can make it better, right, but we won't get it right. One of the key things out of our strategic plan and all thing was to lay out a plan, a calendared plan for preparing each two-year budget and then reviewing it. That will come back to us on the 19th, too. Likely September-ish of this year, we will need to go out to another survey in order to kick off the 2020 budget cycle and begin to have feedback before the end of the year. I don't know exactly what month, but it's somewhere so that as we enter the year 2019, we have gotten some feedback that we'll start to lay in so that by June, we will have cleaned up the budget and we will learn all sorts of things that we didn't anticipate in trying to put this together this year. So, would I have liked to have it all perfect for entering 2019? Absolutely. But I think we will be much better at ending 2020 and hopefully at the mid-year correction then to 2021 will be even better. So, I don't think we, we are going to, I don't think we should look at as the 19th as, if we don't get it by then, it's not worth doing. We just need to tackle it. And we may take it section by section based on the department and, or a typical area, for example. We might decide that we're going to, you know, spend a session dealing with just environmental concerns and our priority and where, and how we deal with, you know, water and waste and, and the priorities and where that, you know, where those metrics fit in, or, you know, public safety or, you know, sense of place. I mean, we may have to tackle these in, you know, shorter meetings where we're really focused because we'll need some staff support, and we don't want the entire city staff sitting in our meetings. So, I don't, I don't want us to throw in the towel if we can't be done by the 19th. I just want to continue to think that we can get, you know, that, that staff is looking for guidance. It is our responsibility to provide them guidance in this particular area. And I, I would like us to shoulder that responsibility and say we will continue to work to provide better guidance.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
If I may, just very quickly, just for the record, for the council's benefit, you already have an adopted fiscal 19 budget. It already has been approved by the city council.
Understood.
On June 19th, we'll ask you to amend that budget based on current circumstances for the next fiscal year. So, any pressure of, of a budget issue is not really there. You've already adopted that budget. That being said, we did get some feedback tonight. What I'd like to ask is, if I can follow up with each one of you individually, to get your input as to the priority order of these objectives and whether or not any objectives are either missing or, or not appropriate to be here. Again, if you look on page 10 of your staff report, there's a little pyramid. What we're really trying to get down to are citywide performance measures. Some of the discussion I've heard tonight, it gets a little more deeper into the weeds in terms of departmental performance measures. And, and appreciate that and understand the council, given this is a very small town and it's very easy to get close to all of our departments and everything they do. But we really want to at least start with the council's focus on citywide measures that then the measures can tell you, give you an indicator of whether or not we're actually achieving those. So, I, I would like to follow up with each one of you individually. We'll continue, we can bring back an update on the 19th. And then, you can decide from there if you want to have additional meetings, if you want to form a, a committee of your council to work with us on, on developing maybe a final document that we can come back and, and bring to your council. But there's a lot of ways to finish this work. We appreciate the input that we've received tonight, and we'll continue working on it, and we will get this done.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item two, we'll go around the whole.
Can I say something before we move on?
Yes, Councilmember Lewis.
And this is exactly why this is the wrong place to be doing this, because this is what it takes. It takes people willing to sit here and talk and hear each other and communicate together, and that is a laborious, tedious process. And it takes longer than some people hope, but this is the process. So, this is why I feel like this is exactly the wrong place to be doing this. I, I understand we can follow up alone with the staff. But for me, because, you know, this is not my expertise, doing it in the group really helps because I hear other people's ideas, which I would never know or understand. And, you know, it's that synergy of, of the group coming to the consensus. So, I agree, there's no way we're getting this done. You know, I can't get this on June 5th and expect to have anything other than, okay, this is probably what we're going to be with on June 19. But I agree, we, we can't say, well, it's June 19, we're done. I think we should start as soon as possible with taking this document and going through it and getting it to a document where the five of us at least feel like, okay, this is the best we can do. And, you know, working with staff, but working together. But, you know, working together is, is the key part of what makes a policy by committee. So, it takes time. It's laborious. It's not fun, but it needs to be done. Thanks.
Councilmember Thompson, any comments on item two?
No, sir.
Okay. Councilwoman Wyatt?
Yes. Yes, I do have some comments. So, in looking through the plan, I guess I have just several observations. One I mentioned before, the, you know, the first, the first six items are pure structural repair and maintenance of assets that we're responsible for. So, structural look at, they're laid out every year. There's an amount of money to be spent to do that. So, useful thing for us to sort of view as essentially core essential things because if you don't repair the storm drains and deal with things, for example, you have an issue. There's the next set of the programs that deal with, you know, things like our roadways and the frequency that certain roadways, we have a, we have a plan to put out there to, you know, over time, each roadway sort of gets laid out on schedule, which is why seven-years view of the world's really, you know, useful because they have a life, right? And so, you need to stagger them out. And so, those are less obvious structural, but alternately, that road is, it's, it's not different than the roof of the building here. They wear out with time and therefore, you know, there's a, there's, they're being consumed and, you know, we're, we're setting aside money in a future year to deal with them. So, getting all of that so we understand, because this is not something the council has a huge amount of say. Yes, we can decide that, you know, our, you know, our PCI can, you know, 75 and I, and I lose funding and, and 100 is way too expensive. So, somewhere there's a couple of places in the middle and staff can give us good advice on, you know, the, the trade-offs between, you know, running at 81 and 85 or something, right? And what they do. What's, but when you look at the budget, it's primarily focused on measure M money because it's required for us to do this to get measure M money. But as a city, we need a broader view of, you know, of the capital app programs that we should put together. So, I, for example, there's, there's money budgeted in here or proposed in here to do a Doheny Village connectivity study a few years out. Now, my sort of view is making Doheny Village better connected to, you know, the rest of the city, to the beach, to the, to the harbor, to the town center and so forth, is a huge plus, right? I mean, you know, it, it got surrounded by things that sort of cut it off. And while you can get there, looking at, pulling in a plan that says, let's envision how we are going to over the next X years improve this connectivity and do what. If I'm an investor looking to do something there or whatever, and I see a plan for that area, that's a huge plus to me. So, as we look at where we're spending money, we need to, you know, to, to start to pull some of those in. There, there's a budget in here for Trolley for the next few years. We need to, you know, we need to look at where you go from there or maybe even during there, right? My general sense, you know, is that, you know, the technology to allow us to do, you know, autonomous shuttles and other things will be online about that time. But we have planning and infrastructure to do to implement things. If we look to say, I can connect by other routes, we should start at least envisioning and, and, and investigating some of the things earlier because, again, that changes. Business parking requirements, it changes, you know, it changes a variety of traffic and infrastructure requirements. But, again, these, some of these, you know, things require some vision for us to start to set aside. The, I mentioned before that I actually think to, you know, to improve public safety, I want to, I would love to have, you know, a storefront, if you will, police presence in Doheny Village and the town center where there's a little place that police says they're working can go in. Our, if we, if we have on their, you know, patrols on the streets, street teams working with homeless or whatever, they can stop by and talk. People who have a question, and I would love to have a mobile unit that can deal with special events so we can pull it down and when there's something going on at the state beach or the park, we can pull a mobile police unit out and give our patrol people. Those are not expensive things, but there's a few hundred thousand dollars to be involved. We haven't yet envisioned how we would set them aside in our budget. And so, we haven't looked at, you know, the rest of the parking facilities. Where do, where do we, you know, we, we, we're looking for our businesses to attract and be successful. We build infrastructure like street sidewalks and even, you know, made the medians beautiful. We can't park them. They actually ultimately can't be successful as that fits into the overall plan. So, I think we need, so I, I think this, this plan is well thought out to identify what we must do to and what we can get funding for. And I think it brings up some things we should start to think about, but set with a limited budget. So, again, as we look at our budget and budget priorities, deciding that we want to make sure we set some aside to accrue monies to start to deal with some of the investments in our future assets and put the plans in place so that businesses and opportunities looking at our city can see where we're going and how, you know, and the studies there. So, as we look to sell the city, having well-thought-out plans for the infrastructure to support it and other things is, I think, essential, and we haven't yet rolled that into our, our capital budget. In fact, we, you know, In fact, we, you know, I appreciate the fact that we actually have never funded capital projects ahead of the end of the year, you know, loose change, if you will. But we're changing that and now we want to start to say it's a part of what we want to think about. So I think we have, I, I'm, I think this was a great project. If we need to approve something sooner rather than later to get Measure M, I'm comfortable with what we're doing here. But I think we need some more guidance and thought again as how we think about where, how we want to invest money in the future. And I think we still ought to spend, it's one of our little workshops thinking, you know, brainstorming ideas, you know, with staff and others, including public about things that, you know, I mean, there's some pretty bright people here in town, so I get lots of input anyway on doing that. So my general input is what we have is, 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 is well done and it will satisfy the immediate need of, I think, hopefully of helping us get the funding we need. Matt, you probably have some input on that. Am I way off base?
No, I think you're right on. Measure M's looking for simply us looking ahead as best we can, knowing what we know right now.
Yeah.
And I think the city council's done a good job at giving us guidance in that way.
So now let's just, you know, take this opportunity to, to push it further in terms of our thought and then, and then it gives us some opportunity to say, okay, so that's where I want to be. Now how do I fund it, right? And then we can come back and deal with that as part of our overall strategy. That's, that's the end of my input. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Yeah, I would echo the priority. I think the connectivity study is, should be much higher on the priority. It's something that will make Doheny Village something much more desirable than it is right now. And it's, it's something that we could really get a lot of revenue from if we make it an enticing and exciting area for somebody to come and invest in. And in addition, I'll hurry up. In addition, I think it will solve a lot of the issues that people, people see as a negative to Doheny Village, that, you know, it's the way it looks, people that hang out there, you know, how much time deputies have to spend there. All of these things will, will write themselves if we can develop it and encourage development and make it a place where local residents will go and shop instead of, you know, somewhere else, San Clemente, San Juan Capistrano. And I think that connectivity is, is a critical part of that. So I would like to see that and I would, you know, if we're getting into prioritizing, I would like to see that much higher than it, than it is, you know, pushed out several years. So these are the kind of things I think we need to sit down and talk about as a council is how much money do we really have and where do we want to put that and when so that we can give the staff guidance of, hey, this is really important to us. I mean, this is great that this is what you guys think, but I think we need to kind of all come to this together so that staff and council are all on the same page. So that's my thoughts.
Mayor Proton Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, you know, the connectivity study and parking and mobility, you know, we're talking about this, the Parking Mobility Task Force. We had a little hiccup at our last meeting which kind of sidetracked us and I think it's something I can, you know, direct Ms. Luna Reynosa on going forward is maybe to kind of get around some of the issues that we were having, maybe we start focusing more on mobility instead of the parking aspect of it and then work from the mobility side to the parking side as we get there and how that's going to affect where we need different parking locations or resources in the city. I think that's a good idea. It takes into account, it's something I've been talking about for the last couple of years, that, that mobility's changing, you know, transportation's changing, our parking needs are going to change with those and we need to look forward into what our parking needs are going to be, not stagnating today in what we have and assume it's going to be like that moving forward. And I, and I think those are good conversations we could have that would, would eliminate some of the issues we have around the parking things on the task force right now. So I like this document. One question, Mr. Senacore, I had a couple of residents up in Monarch Terrace ask me this, so I'm going to ask you. When is Slurry Seal scheduled for up there? And I couldn't answer because I didn't know.
So we're evaluating the whole program over the next several months based on the recent payment management plan that we got. So to honestly answer your question, I don't know right this second. It's got to be coming close though because it's been programmed and thought about. So we'll probably be able to get back to you when we regroup in the fall with more information for the city council.
Sure, okay, thanks. That was a good talk around, I appreciate that. So I had to ask it because it was asked of me recently, so, but yeah, I think if we start looking out and, you know, this is a seven year plan and, you know, I think Paul hit it right on the head, that these autonomous vehicles are going to change the way we move around and they're going to change the way we park. And so, you know, we need to start focusing on that and moving forward. So that's something I'm going to take back to the task force and say that maybe that's something we should really start focusing on right now and then kind of back into the parking aspect from there. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, is this sort of a wish list of projects?
It's a little bit of both. It's, as Councilmember Wyatt said, it is the bread and butter of our horizontal infrastructure maintenance program, but there are some projects that have been identified in the past that are, if you will, a wish list of projects, connectivity study, new medians, things like that. So part of the reason for bringing it to your council tonight for a discussion, not necessarily a vote, is so you had time to think about it and think about, are there things that are not here that should be here and that we should start thinking about and programming into future capital improvement plans? Because now is the time to start thinking about those things and fleshing those ideas out and coming to consensus among the council about what you want to do in terms of priorities.
Okay. And while we're thinking about that, is there anything that you actually considered but perhaps thought shouldn't put on the wish list or is there anything additional that was left off this list, maybe thought it pushed the envelope too much or?
We did cull this list last year prior to the adoption of the current two-year budget. There were quite a few other projects listed and we can share that information with the council in case you wanted to reconsider some of those things. But as I think about it, there are probably a number of smaller beautification projects that we could quickly identify that may not, they would meet the threshold of the dollar threshold for the CIP, but they're, they're not big vision projects that the council might be more interested in.
Very good, thank you. Any further comments in light of mine? No?
No, there's, there's one, there's one sort of heads up on this list, by the way. I think sitting on the water, the water quality subcommittee, there's, there's six and a half million or so dollars laid out in this plan over the next few years to deal with water quality. The San Diego Regional Water Board has been pretty aggressive about looking at reducing various runoff and increasing water quality. We don't know the extent of that yet. I mean, if they got their way, it would bankrupt the city, so we'll have to push back, but that's an area we're going to have to continue to monitor. But there's in here, I think we have everything that we think we are, is going to be essential at least, but there's still some unknown about where that, so there's things that can come in here that will still be disruptive in terms of water quality, I think.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number three, go around the horn, Councilman Thompson, anything?
No, sir.
Councilwoman Wyatt?
I do. So first of all, I want to thank Mr. Killebrew for sort of walking me through how he put the financial plan together today. My concern was that over the course of the, you know, the 20, FY 2018 budget, we came across items that, you know, were structural in nature than we hadn't budgeted for because traditionally hadn't been or they were new or, you know, and a couple of minor cases just missed or in the case of, for example, the custodian, the contract just came out a hundred K higher than we expected it to and we added homeless. And, you know, it was totaled up to, you know, I mean, the things that we added were $900,000 worth of structural costs or something. The overall increase projected forward into 2019 was only about $360,000. I just wanted to make sure that we hadn't missed some of those, but walking through the details with Mr. Killebrew on where we had savings and where we had things and how we moved money around assured me that he would get us all a copy of his worksheet so we could be comfortable that he, that were as good. I'm sure that we won't, I'm sure that we will get, ask to amend the budget sometime during 2019, but I'm hoping that the numbers will be fewer and, you know, and most well understood. So I really appreciate working through that. Now I think our challenge is, we've already talked about coming up, we, we generally have stabilized the budget as we set in coming into the year and for 2018 and 2019. Fortunately, our revenue numbers were a little bit better than we had forecast and so the stabilization and the whole that we have to work through got a little smaller and that's a good thing, but ultimately we're adjusting and we'll make some finer tweaks, but we're ultimately still going to spend every dollar that we bring in operating the city, if you will. That is, we, we have some capital expenditures that now that are in the budget, but those are really structural expenses still, they're not investments into new capital assets. So we're trying to make sure that those are all covered for the first time and that's terrific. I'm thankful and look like do that. Our challenge as we look forward, and it won't happen in the next two weeks, but as we start to work through this whole process of prioritized budget, is that if we want to invest in the city's future and if we believe that there are certain investments that in fact may, in some cases reduce overall cost or improve overall business or bring in revenue, we're going to have to, you know, we can't live paycheck to paycheck, if you will, and spend each dollar that we bring in now on expenses and going right back out the door for operation expense now. So what we haven't dealt with on this budget that we should as we're working through the strategic plan and the whole policy is to figure out how we begin to set aside some money and, and, and put it aside for investing in some of these things that we believe we're going to need in the future. And that's really where, looking at down at some of the line item levels and deciding, you know, it's, the issue we always have is if you, if you tell me whether I want to buy something in isolation, it often makes sense. If you give me a list of 100 things and say you can only buy 20 of them, then I'm much better at deciding which 20 to buy, but if you ask me one at a time without showing me the other things, I have a hard time deciding why I shouldn't buy something. And so as we work through sort of this list that's came back as, you know, our plan now, we're, we're going to be able, we should be able for the first time to put many of the things on the same list and say, this is the list of things you get to pick among and prioritize and pick from and decide how much of that we could set aside for future investments. And then you can, you can put the whole justification around it. So we have work to do. I don't think it will, I think the budget adjustments and the forecasts they made have solid logic behind them to take us as far as they can. Now it's up to us to give some better guidance if we want to make improvements from here. Thank you for the work then, putting this together and bringing it to us.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so on the budget, I'm, I have a lot of concerns about working towards 2020, 2021, 2022, where our goal is to have basically these dashed lines so that we, there's no surplus, there's no deficit, there's nothing. And as, as Mr. Wyatt said, living paycheck to paycheck, I think that's just reckless. And our unassigned fund balance on this page 59, going from what's now 7.7 down to 4 million, you know, these are the good times. This is when we should be putting money away for that rainy day and when the rainy day comes, and it will, I mean, we can't think it's going to be this great forever, that's when we can't be saving money. We need to be saving money for when we need it. And we are particularly vulnerable, I believe, because we are a tourist town and travel is probably one of the first things people cut out in discretionary, discretionary spending. So I have grave concerns about, about what our plan is and what, what our goal is to be working towards. I also say, I also have more than misgivings about, at this point, changing the reserve percentages. I feel like we need to get control of where we're going. What does it cost us to keep the lights on, you know, every, every day? If we, if we had nothing else we could do but keep the lights on and the doors open, how much would that cost us? And that will tell us how much we have left to play with. And then we can decide as a council and staff what we actually want to be doing with that differential. I know we have pension liability that's unfunded and that's going up every year. We have maintenance, as you said, we, we're still playing catch up with that. So I, I see that the policy of lowering the reserves, I would definitely not support that. And I would like to see a plan where we're actually saving money each year in our good years. So, and, and how much should we be saving and based on what? You know, at this point, our reserve is not, from what I can see, based on anything that is tied back to what does it really cost us? So I know, you know, like in your household budget, if, if a disaster happens, you say, well, I need to have six months or a year so that I can go without income and, and still be okay. Well, I think we need that same sort of strategic plan here. How much do we need to set aside? Because what are we, what is our goal? Are we trying to keep the lights on for six months if something happens? What do we really think will be a, a worst case scenario that is likely? So we had the great recession with, the feeling is that that's probably not going to happen again, but there is some, some downturn that, that we see coming. So I think we need to flesh that out. What do we see as a likely rainy day? How much do we need to put aside for it? How much do we need to make sure we keep the doors open? How long should we be able to do that in this downturn? And these are the kind of things that I'd like to see us do. I'm very concerned that, you know, we're working towards just no net deficit but no surplus either and watching our unassigned fund balance going down without talking about these other issues. So I think our budget needs, needs a little more, a lot more work before I, I could get behind it.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I see these numbers as well and, and I think I see it a little bit differently than some of my colleagues do up here. I think the staff's done a fantastic job in reducing, you know, our deficit that we're looking at in 2020 and there may be some options for that. One of the things I would like to commend City Manager Denny on is getting the $200,000 reduction, I guess, I don't want to say in personnel, but I guess that's where it was. But I'd like you to keep that and I think- but I'd like you to keep that, and I think we need to put something there so, you know, we, we don't start creeping up and biting, eating into that. We, that needs to stay right where it is. One of the other things, and the reason I, I see this a little bit different than, than some of my colleagues up here, is I understand we need to cut expenses back everywhere that we can. However, you know, Dana Point is Dana Point for a reason, and we need to be very careful about some of the services that we cut back and, and activities that we sponsor. And I never hear anybody talk about what, it's the elephant in the room to me, it's economic development. We need to find ways to increase our revenues in here, and, you know, we just had a great state-of-the-city event. Thanks, Bev, for, for hosting it with the Chamber, and Kelly for, for doing all the work you guys did. One of the things that was very clear was that the investment that this city made in the Town Center has created a lot of interest in Dana Point. Now, we've done some things that have slowed that interest down in Town Center, but those same issues don't hap, or don't have to be present down in Doheny Village. And so I'm looking at this $900,000, $899,000 surplus that we, we're showing at the end of 2019, and usually when we have surpluses, it's some of the other agencies I sit on with unfunded pension liabilities, we have a plan. It's a policy in OCFA, it's half goes to CIP, half goes to, we called our snowball plan, which is paying down our unfunded pension liabilities. We currently don't have that plan here in Dana Point, and I know, you know, Mr. Kilabrew is working on that, if we're going to end up with the 115 pension trust, or if there's going to be a mixture or a hybrid of that. And so, you know, we need to come up with a policy on what we're going to do when we have these surpluses, and it goes back to, you know, how are we going to fund different things in the city? However, since we don't have that right now and we're working on it, I think it'd be a great idea to take part of this money, maybe half of it, maybe less than half of it, and go into Doheny Village and make that investment in the beautification programs down there. Let's talk with the merchants, the residents, what would you like to see down there, and try to kickstart that process of, of getting the interest into the village and see if we can start the economic development now, even though the, the plan's not completely done. I think people see where it's going and what's going to end up happening down there, I hope, and I hope we're, we're pretty close to that. I think we're maybe a parking plan away from it, which, you know, we know what happened last time we did one of those, but I, I think it'd be a good idea and just give some direction to staff to take a look at this and, and see if there's something we can do down there and just kind of, you know, coattail with what happened in the Town Center and all the interest, interest it generated in our community when we did, we did the infrastructure improvements and the beautification of that part of the city. So that's my direction to staff on that. And, Mr. Kilabrew, please, I don't know how fast you can get back the plan on the 115, you know, pension trust or the hybrid or whatever we're going to do, but that is something we definitely have to start planning for. You know, just to make sure everybody understands, our unfunded pensions aren't growing every year unless CalPERS doesn't meet their, their goals. Okay, that's how they grow. We're, we are making our pension payments that we're required to make every month, correct, Mr. Kilabrew? And so that's what we're really kind of playing with here, and that's what we need to be paying attention to. That unfunded liability is going to be there until we catch up with it at some point, and, you know, the 115 pension trust will go a long way for that, so, thanks.
Thank you. Yes, I, I agree, economic development is a great way to grow our revenues without having to cut our services, but let me ask you, Mr. Kilabrew, I have one quick, kind of big-picture question. I'm looking at page 53 of the staff reports, and also 58 and 59. And of course, these are the charts from the budget workshops, and, you know, I, I see that we have, well, I guess I'll basically say we have a balanced budget for 2018 and 2019, and our reserves are fully funded in accordance with our policies, correct? So the, the issue is what you have highlighted here in yellow, projected for 2020, as we sat here a year ago, you projected for 2020, we were going to need 1.6 million dollars in structural savings, is that correct?
Correct.
And even as we sat here only two months ago, you revised that number down to 1.1 million, correct?
Correct.
And now I'm looking at 197,000, we're down to.
Correct.
First, I think that's great news, but my question really is concerning such a large revision in that number, do you expect any further fluctuation of that magnitude? And I know you can't answer, you know, it might go up, it might go down, but...
I can, I will confidently, but not certainly, say that I don't expect to see increases like we got in property tax. The recapture, if you will, of the lowered assessments from appeals came all pretty much at once this, this year, and didn't really know what they were until we got the April payment, so.
Okay.
I do not expect to see that, but I still expect property tax to do well the next couple of years, especially as some of the bigger developments that we have actually get their certificates of occupancy, which is when they start paying their reassessed values, so the Rain Tree Project and the Zephyr Project in particular, but there's a, there's a couple of other projects, and we still have a, houses getting built in the headlands that are coming online anywhere on the tax roll between six and 10, some 20 million at times. And then the, kind of the bogey in the whole equation for us that would, will be on the good side is Monarch Bay. So as the underlying leases on those properties expire in the next 18 months, the current lessees of, of the properties that are still owned by the trust, by the CAGNY Trust, I'm not sure what the name is now, but they have an, the Molten Trust, they have an opportunity to, at least the ones I've seen, to purchase their properties at 65% of the current market value. Well, they're on the assessed rolls, because the Molten Company still owns them, at way less than that. So those would get reassessed on sale as well, and you're going to see money going into that development. So I don't have those baked into our numbers specifically, but I do have higher than what you might typically expect if things aren't building and, and selling in town, which would be our core level of property tax increase, which is essentially 2% increase a year.
Let me ask you a question on that last comment you just made. I think you said earlier that you are, are making your estimates no longer too conservative and no longer too optimistic. Is that in line with what you just said?
They are still conservative. You know, the farther we get out, you know, when I get out five, six, seven years, and I'm looking at hotel occupancy and what, I get very conservative. I'm not aggressive on the growth rates there, but in the short term, where I've got more known, where more things are known, I might be a little bit more aggressive. But I mentioned in the case of hotel taxes, even next year, I'm leaving them fairly flat with what we're seeing this year, just because I know we're at a peak.
Okay. And as I mentioned before, our 2019 budget, we've already passed that budget, it is balanced, but as we sit here a year from now, we're going to be presented with this chart again, and your best estimate right now is we're going to need to find 197,000 in structural savings for 2020, and then 998,000 for 2021. That's the work we're looking forward to.
The next two-year budget, we would be looking to tackle that 1.2 million.
Okay. And I guess the point has been made, but these are, these are your best estimates. They've already changed from 1.6 million down to 197,000. It's possible that, it's all likely that we're going to make revisions to this by then as well.
There will always be revisions.
Got it, understood. All right. Those are my questions. Any questions in light of any other comments? No? Okay, seeing none, that will conclude our discussion of item nine, our budget workshop. Okay. And we are coming to the last item on the agenda, new business is item 10, the Community Work Plan to Address Homelessness. Mr. City Manager, is there a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Kelly Renders is going to present the staff report on behalf of the task force, but before she does that, I want to thank Kelly and Rachel for their work on the task force, as well as Wayne Yost is still in the audience, and Bev Dorgensen, who I think participated in all of the meetings, and as well as all the other volunteers that were part of the task force, and that, of course, includes our chairman, Paul Wyatt. So with that, Kelly's got a presentation for you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. In April 2014, the Dana Point City Council established a Dana Point Homeless Task Force. In its first few years, the task, if we could back up to the beginning slide, thanks, Mike. The task force really embarked on data collection, established a homeless liaison officer, and entered into a contract with Mercy House for part-time outreach. In the summer of 2017, the task force was reorganized and tasked with developing a work plan. The purpose statement of the task force is, by working jointly with our neighboring cities, the County of Orange, and other engaged public agencies, and working through nonprofit organizations that provide services to homeless, create a sustainable, measurable program to eliminate the necessity of homelessness in Dana Point regional area. I want to thank the task force for their dedication and guidance through the development of this work plan, and to the City Council for your consideration in adopting this plan. I also want to thank those in our community who took the time to read the plan and to submit comments, and we also had one volunteer in our community who especially helped me, Vicki, Vicki Mishner, who operates nonprofit results, volunteered her time and put together a particularly good graphic as a part of this plan. Next slide, please. So the document really has the introduction, stakeholders, task force, at work in the community, strategy, outcome, and measurements. We wanted to create something that was easy to read, summarize our situation, shared who was working in the community, what objectives we had, what the outcomes we wanted to work toward. Obviously, the subject in our region, and even in the state and nationally, is constantly evolving. We definitely strive to be nimble and adjust our course of action as needed, but really this document shares that we're acutely focused and will remain so as we work toward our objectives. Next slide. So for the introduction, we briefly really touch on the causes of homelessness. We obviously know there's a lot of mental illness and substance abuse are, are big issues and contributing factors. We also recognize that there's costs associated locally and resources that are deployed daily dealing with this issue. So we talk in the introduction a little bit about the county's point-in-time count and the city's own count, and that while it's somewhat of a moving target and difficult to get an exact headcount of who may be out there, I think we all come to know, we, we know who our, our people are, a lot of them are regulars, and we strive to, to find those who are under the radar or who may be avoiding contact with outreach. So we also do look for those who are unstablely housed, which means somebody could be living in their car or couch surfing, so there is those, those folks in the population as well. As far as the stakeholders in the document, obviously, we put this chart in. I think we want to make it very easy to identify who and kind of what categories we're working in Dana Point. Next slide, please. So there's a section on the task force, we sort of cover a timeline and the accomplishments, and we want to make sure to acknowledge the role, the role of the task force, its creation, evolution. It was also important to us to talk about community players and who's working in the community in more detail, who those folks are. We wanted to talk about government and specifically down to a department level of what, what really goes on in the different departments within the city and dealing with this issue, and we wanted to talk about faith-based groups and the nonprofit sector, and, you know, also include businesses and residents. Residents and businesses are an important part in that they can help us by being our eyes and ears, and, you know, we also want to recognize, you know, in this plan and as part of our community, that sometimes visibility of homelessness can cause unease, but we are hopeful the community can take a role in supporting programs that will move people out of homelessness rather than programs that will simply maintain someone's homelessness. Next slide. So this is sort of a graphic that we actually shared, I think, at our community forum back in February, that really sort of summarizes what actions we want to take, what the objectives of those actions are, and what outcomes we hope to achieve by that. I often, you know, look at the objectives page because they're sort of like the glue between our actions and our outcomes, and if we can accomplish these objectives, we should make some progress on those desired outcomes. We know that there are challenges, a part of this, some within our control, some not within our control. We know that there's a shortage of, of supportive housing units for the homeless currently in our area. We know that our area in Orange County receives fewer state dollars to tackle some of these issues. So obviously, those are things that we work on regionally, and we also, you know, know that there are other impacts at, at state levels, such as realignment and those things that definitely play into the situation locally. We also want to recognize that there's a lot of hard work taking place to keep our public spaces friendly, and we want to continue that effort, and we want to also help our homeless to, to address their needs, to keep them healthy and safe while they're waiting housing. We partner with county health and behavioral health on this effort, but we also expect that our homeless are law-abiding citizens while they are waiting for that, that housing to become available. Next slide, please. So we really conclude the plan with measurements. We want to track enough to give us some data about what's happening out, out on our streets, but we do not want to bog down our social workers who are contracted through Mercy House and Family Assistance Ministries with overly exhaustive paperwork. We want them to be spending time out on a, doing outreach in the field. So we've also implemented software that we use, where we have created a by-name database. We're tracking our interactions, we're tracking coordinated case management, we're tracking connections to services, and also we are tracking who is service-resistant. We conduct weekly case management meetings, often moving through our by-name list, and we have staff, outreach, police services, county healthcare agency, Public Works. We identify sort of the critical issues, what the plan is going to be for the week. We share information and just continue to move forward in this process to reduce the necessity to be homeless on the streets of Dana Point, and to help our homeless individuals who are accepting services to get, to get what they need and to help connect them with housing and resources to better their situation. So that concludes my presentation. I, again, want to thank the task force for its diligence. I look forward to continuing to focus on implementation of these efforts and hopefully move toward our desired outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, are there any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Bring it back to the council. The recommended action is that we adopt the Community Work Plan to Address Homelessness. I'll make the motion for the recommended action.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. I will open it up to discussion. I'll go around the horn and see if there's anything.
Everything looks great to me. I just want to thank all the members that put in all the hours of dedication to put this plan to fruition and bring it here tonight, so very thankful for those members of our community and our council that worked on it, and I have great thanks for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wyatt?
I do have some comments, because I have a lot of thank yous, among other things, to give, heading the task force was, and, you know, I, we, we took a bold change of direction mid-year with the support of a lot of people on the city staff and members of the task force and, and set out to do some things. So I would also like to add my thanks to all the members of the task force for their thoughtful engagement and support in developing those, this work plan. I also want to, of course, thank the city staff members, Kelly and Rachel, for supporting the task force, and with the direction provided, developing this work plan, it was a lot of work and a terrific job. I would like to make sure I extend thanks to the Dana Point faith-based organizations. We challenged them and asked them to participate and take a key role in helping us work with the homeless, and, and they stepped up, you know, and engaged and really put together a successful effort to engage the homeless, and this was really critical to, this is, was critical and will continue to be a critical portion of, of this work plan. And I'd like to actually offer special thanks to Stephanie August, our care coordinator for Mercy House. She went way beyond her set of defined responsibilities in Call of Duty to provide us guidance, suggestions, show us what was going on in other places, and, and I think, you know, was, was key to, you know, getting us pointed was, was key to, you know, getting us pointed in the right direction in many areas. So I want to make sure she thanks her. We've had lots of interesting feedback as people read the task force, but one thing I'd like to make clear, that the task force and resulting work plan is not focused on the homeless. It focused on the impact of homelessness. That impact is in every part of our community. It's, it impacts our residents, our visitor, our, our businesses, our visitors, and of course, it impacts the homeless to be on the street. We needed to look at addressing the impact across the city to put together a work plan that was, that met the city's needs. One of the things that we were, we needed to be able to do as a welcome, welcoming, livable community is hold all people in our city equally responsible for, you know, their behavior and their impact on the city. We set, we have social norms that are required, and, and allowing anybody in the city to not, to voluntarily not be good, be good residents and, and good neighbors wasn't really acceptable. And in the situation as we looked, the word, key word necessity comes up here, when people had no choice about what they did, we need to step in and need to step in and give them the choices to allow them to, you know, to, to be good citizen or residence. On the other side, you know, everybody needs to, to view them as people. So the, a key part of the task force is, you know, as Kelly mentioned, we have a name list, we work with them by name, we address them as individuals, we work on what their need to improve. But in addition to that, we set expectations for them, right? You know, what's okay, what's not okay. And they deserve that respect. I mean, that may be difficult at times, but we deserve them to, to, to be good, good community members. And we, and as, as community members, and, and they deserve the, the respect of us to, to treat them like they can be good community members. We cannot make them second-class citizens. They are members of our community, and we need to address them and treat them as so if we want them to, to really step up and, and do their thing. So we've put together a work plan that we think that focuses on the impact of homelessness, works with the homeless to, you know, change the impact on them, but also with the rest of the community to, to address that impact. And I think this work plan, you know, certainly has my backing and support, as we brought it to the council. And we'll have lots of little bumps in the road of things that we learned when we implemented. We've already learned some, some intriguingly interesting things by working with the people and, you know, on a, on a much closer basis and touching, and touching them, you know, once or twice a week in general. We, at least, it's our intent to make sure we engage with them a couple of times a week to make sure we know what their needs are and we have a plan for them and we work through them. So as we do that, we learn, and, you know, and as we learn, we'll adjust, and we've already learned, you know, the profiles and differences in the mix of people and what we, what we believe we have. We have a couple of more sets of data that we're collecting that will give us additional guidance. But this is a, this is a sustainable program that will kick off, and of course, ultimately, you know, we'll need to work housing and, you know, and, and house them. And then when we do that, again, you know, there was, that housing units may be in Dana Point, we have places in Dana Point where it's, it's allowed by right. But we understand that, as, as was pointed out to me very, very gently, when I visited one of our super, permanent supportive housing complexes, there are no, there are no homelessness here. There are people who previously were, were not housed, but the people here are housed. And the expectations of how they behave and how they interact with their neighbors is the same with any other group of people and any other housing unit here. And I think they said, and we set that expectations because they deserve to have that expectation set for them. So we will learn, we will deal, we will work through them, and we will make, we will do everything within our reach to make our, our community a better place because we're willing to step up and deal with them.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. I just have a few brief comments. Basically, I just want to say that I am very pleased to enthusiastically support this plan, and just a lot of thank yous to, first, the chairman, Mr. Wyatt of the task force. I'm sure would not have gotten off the ground without his tireless leadership and the, I can only imagine hundreds of hours you put into this. And Kelly, you too, I mean, fantastic job, couldn't have happened without your dedication and Mark as well. So, and then all the people on the task force and our Mercy House and FAM outreach people, very critical to go out there, know these people, and try to help them. And the same with the chief and the deputies. When I was out there riding with Deputy Mertz, they knew all these people, their background, you know, and they, they stepped out of the cars and, and interacted, and I, I think that that had a, you know, a big effect. And, and they did it in a nice way. It was, it was firm, but very humane, and, and whenever it was able to help someone, they were out there helping someone. And, you know, they weren't trying to, to make them feel unwelcome, but they were trying to make them feel as though there's a better way and we're here to help you with that. And I thought that was a great message from our police and from all of the people working on this task force. So thank you all very much for your, your work.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, you know, I just want to echo the sentiment you're hearing. This is, this is a lot of hard work. You guys did a great job on it. So I was reading through the staff report, I, I was reading things that just made me look at you guys going, how did you even think to address this? I mean, one of the things is, it's virtually impossible to know the true number of people living on Dana Point streets at any given time. I, I read something like that, I'm like, how do you scale the treatment when you don't know how many people are really there? I mean, this is a very daunting task. And, you know, you, you really addressed my, my biggest questions about this was, how do we really measure this? You know, it's gonna be difficult, you know, it's, it's, you know, I, I still don't know if there's a good answer to that, how do you measure it? Because it's such a, a, a fluid community and they're moving in and out of your city. So, but I, I gotta tell you, you guys did a fantastic job on this. I really appreciate all the time you put into it. You know, when, when you see a community like Dana Point who, you know, some other communities may not feel that, that we're compassionate towards the needs of others all the time, step up and do something like this, it really sends a strong message to the rest of the county that this can be done. So I want to thank you guys for all this hard work. Paul, Kelly, thank you so much.
Thank you. One of the things about going last is all the thank yous have been said, but I'm gonna say them anyway. First, thank you, Councilman Wyatt, for taking on tackling this issue and heading up the, the task force. Thank you, Kelly, for all the work you've done on this. I want to thank the, the other members of the task force, we have two of them here, Wayne Yost, Bev Dorgensen. I'm actually just gonna read the names of those members of the task force, even if they're not here. Rich Hayden, Shannon Levin, Kim Tilly, Danny Murphy, Rick Erkinoff, Susan Price, Larry Pritchett, and Jim Cerber as well. I want to extend thanks to them. And, and I also want to say, one part of the plan talks about educating Dana Point residents and giving them opportunities as well to participate in addressing this issue. And I'm glad that, that Kelly, I actually already recognize, we have a, a member of our community, Vicki Michner, who did a fantastic job. I want to specifically thank her as well. She volunteered her time for no other reason than to help out her community, extremely hardworking and talented. So I want to thank Vicki as well. And so having said all the thank yous, I'm pleased that we've come forward with a plan that we're, we're all going to support. And, and we know as a community that, you know, this, this does not solve the issue. We are going to continue to work on this, but this is certainly very good work, and I, I think that the, the results, I'm, I'm looking forward to the implementation of the plan. So having said that, if there are no further comments, I will, I will call for the vote. And all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Please no outbursts from him. Okay. All right. That brings us to, that was the last item on the agenda. That brings us to staff reports. Mr. Denny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick things, and thank you for recognizing Ms. Michner because she's a great example of the level of professionalism that we have within residents in the city. And, and it's great that she stepped up to help us as a volunteer to do that. So we're really appreciative. While we're thanking volunteers, wanted to make sure we said thank you to the poll worker volunteers that worked from 7:00 AM this morning till 59 minutes ago. They're probably still down there cleaning up the polling place as well as the other polling places in, in town. We appreciate their, their work. I'll chime in with Nancy's reminder to everyone, we'll see everyone on Sunday at Art Fest on Del Prado. And given that the trolley starts on Friday, we encourage everyone to hop on the trolley and ride the trolley to Art Fest on Sunday, but you can hop on on Friday because that's when it starts. And so, Matt, did I mention that the trolley starts on Friday enough times for you? That'd be Friday, June 8th. Just as a follow-up to the public comment, Matt, I'll give Matt some credit, he's been working very hard with the county on adjusting their detour around Creekside Park. We still have some more work to do, although the good news is that project should be done by July if they stick to their schedule, and Matt's going to help keep them to their schedule. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. And with that, that comes to the adjournments. The next regular meeting of the City Council will be June 19th, 2018, at 5:00 PM here in the City Council Chamber. And with that, we are adjourned.